They're there.
Actually, while he's getting the IT ready, because he likes to be on time, we're already two minutes late. Um, my name is Suzanne Fair. For those of you that don't know me, there's, I think, maybe one or two more people that, three people that I see that I haven't worked with in the past. Um, I'm a theatership coach in Durango. I facilitate, I'm a facilitator. Um, I do strategic planning, I do board retreats, all that kind of fun stuff. I love people, I love communication, uh, I love all that kind of stuff. So, um, Jose asked me to come and facilitate the retreat today, um, with the new counselors, uh, and the, the, all the counselors, not just the new counselors, but all five of you. Um, and so I have actually not met a couple of the counselors. So, uh, what I would like to do just for myself and for you guys to observe is I want to ask the counselors a couple of questions, uh, to get the day started. And then we'll move into our first topic, which is housing. Uh, so, um, and hopefully when we're done, this lovely gentleman doing IT will be done. So, um, just so you know, I am a Durango resident. I have two kids, a junior in high school and a, and a freshman in high school. My daughter was just in the, um, soccer playoffs last night and Durango High School lost zero to three, uh, to Lutheran. So it was a bummer, um, for that, but, uh, they made it further than they've made it. The girls soccer team made it further than they've made it in many, many years. So that's actually a really cool, really cool thing to be a part of. Uh, so, um, I'm going to start with Jessica and we'll just move this way. Um, so introduce yourself to me. I know some of you already, but introduce yourself to me. And basically because this is a day where, you know, you're starting and we're, we're talking about a lot of topics, uh, that had, that everybody is involved in. What I just want to know is as a counselor, what, um, how, what's the most important thing that you want the city staff to know about how you operate? So, and this is just maybe like a two-minute thing. It's not a, it's not a huge thing. Um, but, but let, let them know, uh, how you, how you like to operate. Like what's the most important thing about you being a counselor and interfacing with, uh, city staff?
Yeah. Thank you. Um, Jessica, everybody, hi. Um, hopefully you know how I operate by now, um, four years in, but, uh...
This is also for the new, for the new counselors that are here as well.
Right. Yes. Um, I think the biggest thing for me with city staff is that they're, they feel comfortable to like push the boundaries and be creative and bring new ideas and they feel comfortable enough to do that, even if we're going to say no, like, you know, no one's birthday is getting taken away by bringing something that we don't like. And I think that that's how we're going to, you know, be innovative and, uh, be successful. So.
Awesome. Thank you.
Um, Gil Kiyasi. City Councilor, current mayor. Full-time resident, graduated at Fort News College, 1997 out of the business school. Mainly through my life, I've been involved in non-governmental nonprofits.
Okay.
So I didn't know a lot of the, uh, structural people from, uh, say 10 years.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So basically, uh, what I would like the staff to know, and I think they already know, is the fact that I'm not a top-down person. I believe in encompassing, uh, everybody's opinion into a, you know, going forward type of motion. And I do think the current, uh, executive staff, they have those same ideals. So I think it's a good working relationship.
Great. That's all. Okay. Thank you. Shirley.
Hi. Good morning. I'm Shirley Gonzalez.
It's me.
And I, I, I think, um, I've been finding your question a little difficult to answer.
Yeah.
Um, I do want to say that I really love this work. Um, I really love connecting with people in the community. Um, I really believe that this work, uh, should be primarily driven by community engagement, community involvement.
Okay.
Um, and so in terms of how, you know, I'd like to receive information, um, I prefer the higher level to the details.
Okay.
Um, and, um, that I, I think that I really enjoy in policymaking that includes community participation.
Okay. That's great. That's great. That's helpful for the staff to understand, um, that that's, that's how you operate and that's what you, that's how you approach things. I think that's great. So you did great. I don't think that it was a weird...
I wasn't answering at all to like, I'm an S, sitting in a gram, I'm an A, but I was not entirely sure what you were looking for, but I don't know.
I think that's a great response.
Okay.
Uh, Kip Coso. Um, so I grew up in Durango and most people probably saw a lot of this during the election, but, um, you know, very passionate about my community. Felt like my community gave me a ton when I was a kid, wanted to continue that. Um, as I boomeranged, I ran away as fast as I could, you know, graduating out of high school and boomeranged back. But I, I think one of the key things that I, I'm, I'm looking for is both the, the focus that we have on local, um, promoting local, whether that's local purchasing, local hiring, local, you know, you're going to see that as a thread through a, a lot of my conversations. And I, I really do enjoy the conversational aspect, even our biggest critics. I love going into the lion's den. I love walking into their place of business and sitting down and talking to them about the most controversial issue. I, I, I think that's the best way to get past through some of this stuff. So you'll find me often talking sometimes probably to Jose's frustration that I may be having spontaneous conversation with you and it needs to not be that conversation. I do not have a problem when you go, "Nah, we need to, we need to have this in a more formal format." So I will do my best on that, but please don't, don't be shy about pushing back. If it's, uh, if it's something that somebody else needs to be in that room as well.
Thank you. Nice to meet you.
Hi, Dave Woodruff. Um, I would say that primarily I thrive in, um, connecting and engagement. Um, it's part of, by virtue of me being in the industry that I'm in, in food and beverage. Um, but it's my hope that whatever we do and however we connect, it's authentic and... authentic and predicated on, on trust. We don't always have to agree, but I kind of ran on and I, it's part of my ethos is like I'll always listen, you know, we may not agree, we may not always come to the same conclusion, but I will always listen. And even if we still come apart and disagree, I will give you the forum, whether it's staff, community, you know, fellow counselors, it, it really doesn't matter to me. And so, yeah, I, I feel like that's how I quote-unquote operate is through just that authentic connection and engagement in whatever form it is.
Great, thank you. Thank you all for explaining that. Anything that you want to add after hearing others speak or anything? Okay, we're going to move on to housing. Who is, are we good on AV? Okay, perfect. Is it called AV now? Was that like a reference to me being over 50? Is it called AV? Audiovisual, I think it is, right? I just remember the, remember the big like TVs, some of you don't remember this, but like the big TVs that they would roll into your classroom and it had like, and then the teacher would like try to push all the buttons and it was like, sometimes it wouldn't come through. Yeah, that's what I think of when I think of AV. Those big huge TVs. So who is presenting on housing?
Suzie, we have a few that are going Luke, Steve, Bryce, and then Mike. And these are kind of two issues that we combined. Counselor Coso, you had asked for warming center, as it, and then Counselor Gonzalez had asked for kind of housing from all, all retrospects from the unhoused to affordable and workforce housing. What are our efforts? So we just kind of combined it into one and we'll have all of them kind of touch upon some of those areas in housing and some of our activities that we've done, some of the things that have been successful, some that have not. And then after that, we'll try to limit 10 to 15 minutes and then it's all open discussion for the council to kind of discuss amongst yourselves of what you see as maybe future ways of moving forward or things you'd like the council to consider. So whoever on y'all's side, I don't know the presentation for goes. Sorry, let me ask one question, just for rules of engagement. Do you want us waiting until the end of the presentation or do we want to be asking questions as we go along?
Let's get through the presentation and if you have questions on the presentation, let us know.
Okay.
Also, as, as you get into your discussions, if there's anything that you need from staff, we can jump in, but I do want to ensure that you all have time to discuss amongst yourself because I think that was one of the most important parts of this.
Got it, thank you.
Good morning. I'm going to start off with just giving some backgrounds and context to housing, specifically what the current environment looks like in our community and talk about some stats, so get into it. I'm going to skip the vision mission and the prosperity mission and alignment. I'll go straight into some data. This is data that was just posted a couple of weeks ago and it looks at the single-family home pricing in Durango proper, so that's within the city limits. So this is not Durango Mountain, this is not anything in the unincorporated category, specifically Durango proper. The, the stats that are, are complete are year-to-date, so the first column is end of year 2023, the second column is end of year 2024. You can see that the median price jumped significantly, almost 20% from 23 to 24. We ended up at 925 in, for median home price and then the average sales price tipped over a million dollars and that was also close to 20% from 23 to 24. The, the activity was fairly consistent, maybe a 7% uptick in, in terms of listings and a, and a slight downtick in terms of total sales for the year. If you look at year-to-date, so this is through April of 2025, we've seen a decline both in, in median as well as average, and I think that's primarily because of the inventory that's being sold right now. The cost of money is significantly higher than it was in 2023. Mortgage rates are a lot higher, they haven't calmed down at all. And so it's, it's a lot harder to get some of the larger homes sold unless they're cash buyers. I also believe that most of the cash buyers have come and gone, right? So that's why now we're seeing a decline in, in cash buy and, and so I think that's what's causing the softness in the market. I actually don't think that we're more affordable today than we were yesterday. If you look at the decline, it's, it is significant though, it's over a 20% decline in median sales home price and 14% decline in the average from, and mind you, it's a little bit lower in terms of volume because we're just talking about January, February, March, and April. And those are not the high-volume months for transactions in Durango. So how's that relative to La Plata? This is what's very interesting. Historically, we always felt like La Plata was a little bit more affordable than Durango proper. And if you look at the numbers, those are really merging. The prices in La Plata are not necessarily significantly less than Durango proper. And if you look at what's happening year-to-date, the numbers are actually a little higher in La Plata County than in Durango proper in certain cases, right? So I guess the takeaway here is it's, it's not easier in the county than it is in the city, which historically it was significantly. How does it relate to Bayfield? Bayfield is still somewhat affordable in, in context, in, in relativity, but you can see that the numbers in Bayfield have been really consistent. They are not as volatile as you're seeing in, in Durango proper or in La Plata County. They're very consistent and it's probably because of low volume. There's just not enough volume to change, change that number and all the product is very similar, very, very similar product. We just recently were presented a housing needs assessment at the RHA. This was commissioned by the RHA and Root Policy are, or it's the company that did the, the housing needs assessment. I'm just going to pull out a couple of things that are, are relevant for this group. The, first of all, the inventory need in La Plata County was 1,550 units in the next five years. And that breaks down to 1,100 in ownership and 450 in rental. I actually think the rental number is a little small. A lot of the data that, that this was based on is sort of historical data. In other words, they're not able to get current data to 2024, with the exception of the, of the stats that I just showed you, but in terms of demographic and census data, it's really hard for them to get anything that's that crisp, that that's, that's, that new. In terms of year-to-date, I've already covered the, the single-family home prices. This is probably dated by a month. And then the, this is what's interesting. The housing cost index is, it takes into account the entire US, so 100% is what the US average is. Durango is currently at 185%, so approximately 85% above US cost, housing cost index, but we're not that far ahead of the entire state of Colorado. So Colorado is 167% in terms of the cost index, but we are higher than the state, just to give you an idea where we rank in terms of, of our average. This is, this is what's, what's alarming. If you think about the AMI, so I'm going to pull 80 to 120% AMI, which is kind of our, our missing middle of the workforce, I would argue that it's probably maybe 60 to 140 and move those goalposts both up and down, but let's just stick to 80 to 120% AMI. That income translates, so on the, the, the bold is 120, the non-bold is 80%. So it translates to income of $70,000 per household and $106,000 per household on 120. Household is about 2.5 people. And by the way, the single-family home, which I failed to give you that, is typically three-bedroom, two bath. And that, the, the prices that we were looking at was single-family home. So the affordable rent for 80 and 120 is 1,700 and 2,600 respectively. And then the affordable home, which is 30% of their income, is 187 to 337. So when you look at our median sales price and you look at what's affordable in that 80 to 120 AMI, the gap is almost 3X. It's enormous. And what that means is that historically, when we did mortgage assistance programs and we tried to, to shorten that gap, that gap is, is, is now almost, almost untenable is when you think about trying to, to do mortgage assistance and trying to cover that gap. We're still having some success with mortgage assistance, but that's for subsidized housing. We have to do a buy-down in order for that gap to work because we can't just apply mortgage assistance and expect us to get even close to being able to put people that are 120 AMI into a home at market rate. The next stat I'll pull out is a home ownership market. So in La Plata, 71% own a home, in Bayfield, 74, makes sense, in Durango, it's 55, and in Ignacio, it's 62. The rental affordability gap, this, this is a little skewed, but we're really looking at is affordability under 50% AMI and what the gap is in terms of number of units, right? So this is not necessarily the rental gap overall. This is, this is only looking at a lens of 50% AMI or less. And what the, what the, the research said is our community lacks in terms of inventory. So what is Housing Department at the city doing in invading housing solutions? We're really trying to focus on how we participate in Prop 123. Those are some, some goals that we have documented and that we're trying to achieve to stay in the program. The, we opted in to the program in 2023. The program was as a result of legislature that passed in 2022 that earmarked $300 million for affordable housing. 50% of that will go to the consumer, mortgage assistance, and 50% of that will go to the building of inventory. And so it's managed through, through DOLA on the inventory and it's managed through CHAPA on the mortgage assistance consumer side. In order for us to qualify for those grant monies, we have to meet the requirements and currently we are tracking pretty well. Those requirements are, we have to have 3% growth year over year. And by the end of, of 2026, we have to have met those numbers or else we are no longer eligible to participate in that program. By the end of 2026, we also have to have a fast track for affordable housing in terms of how we're doing planning and that's less than 90 days specifically for affordable housing units. So one of the things, things that just happened recently is we were awarded a grant of $185,000 to create capacity within our organization to meet these objectives. So Jamie and I have started to sit down and figure out how we're going to do that specifically on the planning side. We'll hire a resource that probably 50 to 75% of that person's objectives will be attached to this program and attached to that grant. So it's a cost avoidance for us. We had the headcount anyway, but now we have a focus specifically on how we can achieve these, these numbers to keep us within the program. Why are we so focused on the program is because that's a source of, of funding that I think is going to be really critical for us in years to come. Maybe not today, as I go through some projects, some of these are eligible for Prop 123, some of them are not. But when I think of long-term, five to 10 years, as that pipe gets cleaned out, we definitely want to be in that program and we want to have, have, have met all the requirements to do that. So speaking of projects, I'm going to briefly go over how we're trying to address creating inventory. There's a handful of projects that are, are on the table. Some of these you have heard about, some of these have come before you and you have, have, have been given presentations and details on. The Rivergate property is a property that we just acquired at the end of 2024 with some ARPA money to the tune of, of a little over a million dollars. We have the ability to build 31 units on that parcel. We have a rider first refusal on a second parcel that's subsequent to that and that gives us opportunity to, to put out an RFQ and find a public-private partner that is willing to do 71 units at, all at 125 AMI or, or less. The residents at Durango, we're, we're struggling to get that open and that's an issue, that's a water main line. The, the biggest challenge there is, is everybody was in such a rush to get that deal closed based on the capital stack. So there are some variables that were, were not in our control. Our engineering department did the best that they could to provide information of, of the water line, but the developer did not have the time to, and actually postponed putting engineering to actually validate exactly where that water main line was and what the tie-in would look like. As a result of, once the building got built and they went to tap in, the water line wasn't exactly where they thought it would be and that required a lot of moving parts and pieces. CDOT had to get involved and it created a lot of, of delay. I'm pretty optimistic that within the next few weeks, probably three to four weeks, we'll get this opened. There's two components to it. The one in the front is 72 units, those are conversion units that are all going to be studios and one bedrooms. And then there's 48 units in the back that's new construction, that'll be two and three, three-bedroom units. What's really special about this project, and, and I take zero credit for this, because all of it was, was done and, and prior to me coming in, is that it's 30 to 60% AMI. And today, we don't have any product right now available that's at that 30 to 60% AMI, which is considered lower income.
Mike, I just want to let you know, you're almost at 15 minutes, right?
Okay, I'll, I'll rush, I'll rush through this. Lightner Creek.
More important things to.
Lightner Creek Commons, that's the old Anmas High School, 31 units, that will be at 100% AMI. Durango Crossing, that's an opportunity for URA to pick in and create a substantial amount of that to be at affordable. So 50% of the ownership will be at 125% AMI or less and 100% of the rental multifamily will be at 100% AMI. And then last but not least, there's the West Side Triangle, that's a preservation project, but there's some new units that will come available there. With that, I'm going to hand it over to Bryce and Luke to talk about what we're doing under that 30% AMI.
Don't worry, guys, we'll keep it like me, short and sweet. Can you pull up our presentation now?
How is it?
It's at the second one, the number two. All right, so we're going to give a quick update on what the city currently does and serving the unhoused, a highlight on the past, present, and requested future for the emergency warming center and, you know, what we're looking at as kind of a research project in response to the needs.
If you have a lot of questions, when we get to the weeds, we have some of the experts that have been digging stuff out of holes this morning, hands are already all dirty and will be able to answer questions as well.
So just to show you how multifaceted this project is, we have three of us up here, we have myself, we have Jamie, we have Bryce, we could have five more people up here because so much of the services we do for the unhoused cross so many issues. We have a wonderful page, homelessness in Durango, that Mike has, Tom has done such an amazing job on keeping updated. I'm constantly referring to people, this is straight from it and it looks at some of the many things we do. No class land leases for VOA, manna, sparrow, hilltop and other, we have the co-core responder team, which is the city and access health. We have load of transit bad passes, food and utility rebates, we have the residents of Durango we just mentioned and several other low-income and workforce housing initiatives. When I, and then we go into just, we can answer questions about that later, about what some of those programs were. This is some of our community support funding from 2024 that goes through the United Way. As you can see, 114,000 directly to groups that do direct services to the unhoused. I include that other number, the 325, because a lot of the groups do indirect work with the unhoused. We have Say So, we have Reply New Services, that they do indirect, they do services to the whole community, but a lot of their clients are unhoused or very much in danger of becoming unhoused and these services keep people from that. So this is a large expenditure.[1754.68] And what I always say, and I try to say this publicly as much as I can, is I challenge anyone to find a city that's twice our size that's doing half as much. And I say that because I'd really like to research that city because often we are comparing apples to oranges. Often we are comparing cities that are metropolitan cities or directly adjacent to a metropolitan city when we look at like programs. And so that is really important because they have such different needs and different abilities. So scalability is something you'll hear a lot when we talk about serving the unhoused. And it makes it very difficult to look at if something is scalable or not. And with that, I'll hand it over to an unhoused snapshot of what we're doing with right now with Bryce.
So also with his slide, there's a lot of ancillary costs that sometimes people don't consider. And it's a lot of the cleanup and stuff that we do. Those guys are hauling off trash every single day and we also budget for cleanups. If there's, you know, if there's needles or if it's just to a point where they can't do it alone, sometimes we all pitch in and the entire office goes out. And we also partner with the county and group together our trailers and other tools that we have and we clean these things up. And then other ties, other times we we contracted out. And so there's also public safety and law enforcement costs. There's court costs that we don't consider all the time, emergency medical services that aren't always considered. And sanitation and public health. And then obviously our municipal court system. And it takes a large portion of that court system as well. So as far as April of two thousand and twenty five, you know, it it still remains a significant issue, but we've definitely decreased since then. And the history is obviously Purple Cliffs. And there's also a history before that behind the tech center and then where the fire happened. And and we had to do an emergency declaration, have people stay in town for a while. And it was sunup to sundown, which people often get confused as to what the city manager can do or can't do if they don't read the policy. And and if what they can and can't do between the the sunlight hours. And we're trying to educate everybody on that with the Rangers and code enforcement as well. But we've seen a after Purple Cliffs disbanded, Mana and some other groups that we work with really did a good job at housing families. And a lot of the hotels had a lot of the families and families looked different. You know, a lot of cousins, aunts, there was a lot, but there were a lot of families and there was a lot of conflict with a lot of the hotels. The hotels won't even house people at this point because of some of the the destruction that was seen. And then friends coming and the things. And we we partnered with the hotels too and tried to work with individuals and the families staying there. But since then, the point in time count in two thousand and twenty three, and we're about to have another one released any any day now, right? The there was one oh nine unhoused individuals identified. But in in reality, if you go up to the four hundred, we went out and did actual surveys. And the point in time count is difficult and we don't feel that it's very accurate all the time. And really talking to Mana and everybody right now who's seeing everybody and feeding everybody. And talking to Marissa, she truly feels there's about, there's between one hundred and fifty and two hundred individuals out there, but that's also counting people that are couch surfing, NRVs, maybe up at the college and people that just are transitioning through the bridge program as well. And they have a pretty good grasp on this because they're constantly having meetings with all these partners that we work with as well. We're probably dealing more with along the lines of, you know, twenty to thirty individuals, some that have been here forever. And then some that transition. I love that Steve's shaking his head because that means I'm hitting the mark. And so that we have in the springtime, we do have people come here and transition. And if we are not effective in what we're doing during that time period, it will just grow substantially throughout the the city. Another thing to note, you know, contributing factors include job loss, high cost of living, limited affordable housing. We just heard from Mike absolutely all that, but also we draw from Cortez and Farmington because of our lax drug laws. Anything less than four grams of any hard drug is a misdemeanor in Colorado. And we have transportation and food and very generous people in this town. And I've seen that working undercover narcotics for years in Farmington, I've seen a lot of people I knew that had come have come up here just for the party when it was Purple Cliffs. And so and we've we've researched over and over. You know, outdoor managed camps, whether they work or they don't work. And we've seen the city and the directive from the council move towards this transitional housing versus the outdoor managed camps. Because we've seen how hard that is to.
Just me.
Well, no, you, you and Luke together. We have a lot to cover today.
And a lot of the transitional housing that we have is the Lumion and the Aspero both. And I think the Lumion has forty units and Aspero has Noah Sparrow has forty units and Lumion has eighty six units total. And they also have services there. And and this is not a correct number right now because I haven't researched it recently. But in the past, when I looked at it, six months ago, we were we were going up to Lumion one point five times per day. And that's not something we talk about because there's a lot of good things in the public. There's a lot of good things happening there as well. And I'm just gonna transition into this and then I'll turn it over to Jamie. But the past efforts, Durango has a history of attempting warming centers. And so some of the previous, two years ago, there was the Christian Church. It was open three days a week and it was during the daytime. Previous to that, there was another one downtown. And there was some conflict with individuals with yards. And you guys have heard this in a lot of the meetings and stuff and and that went away. And then the Mana Resource Center actually acted as a warming center during the day when people would come in and eat. Now it's a pantry and that's no longer an option. And then last year, we know that Donna May has her center where she does a lot of addiction recovery and counseling during the day. And it and and they partnered as a double use to come in and run the and Nina organization had volunteers. And they do a lot of training and stuff and and we could talk about that here in a minute. With trauma informed individuals and they generally had about two volunteers there at night. And Luke could talk about some of the numbers here in a minute. But some of the issues were obviously, I'm just going to cut to the chase. You can ask his questions later if you need more time. Sprinklers, people want to sleep. And if there's no sprinklers in there, a fire code, they can't sleep. And and Donna May was really sticking to that because she needed to keep her center alive during the day and didn't want it shut down. And there was a little bit of conflict there and they worked it out. And another issue is everybody was having to be kicked out at six o'clock in the morning, which is the coldest time of the morning. And if it's less than fifteen degrees when everybody's exiting the warming center.
All right, so I've been brought in more recently with discussions with the nonprofit groups to try and find a resolution for next year. And so we started out looking, okay, our code required, the only use we can call it in our code if we wanted to look at the lane use code is a shelter. And a shelter is very limited. It's usually in our commercial areas, it's going to be nearby neighborhoods, not ideal locations for something like that. So we opted for a secondary approach, which is similar to what we've done in the past. It's basically an extreme weather ordinance that council would be able to approve that would say, okay, from December to April at this location, under these circumstances, where would we allow this? And so that's kind of the direction we were looking at with them. They've provided me with a couple of example ordinances and we're going to work on if if the direction of the council is to work on a direction to try and craft an ordinance that would be acceptable. I think the biggest issue right now is is a location. They're struggling to find a location that one will not be a nuisance to the neighborhood it is in. But also that because of the temporary nature of it, they have to be able to have a little bit of wiggle room when it comes to when people can get there, when they can leave and not impact the business who is already there. But also the major concern that we're going to have is life safety. And so we may be able to find a degree of wiggle room around sprinklers, but there's going to be other things that we're going to look for in lieu of that. So I mean, if we can find three or four buildings, they can do a life safety inspection on them and figure out, okay, will this work? Because we don't want to put people in danger putting them in a building for sleeping overnight. And that was the reason that they were required to be awake during the night is because there's no fire sprinklers. If there's a fire, we need people to be awake and aware and be able to evacuate the building.
And Mike Todd's talked a lot about a federal safety rule that could be adopted into an ordinance. You know, if and then the the argument would be both ways. One, what is a declaration? Declaration is something you can plan for and then what's an emergency? And if it's predictable, it's preventable. And is it predictable? And can we prevent it through finding the right place to go to? And so that's some of the questions I think that would be up for discussion.
One more slide. So what we're doing right now is researching best practices. State has a wonderful website that lists everyone that works through the state that has an emergency warming center. There's going to be a couple that don't work through the state or haven't that aren't, you know, but it's a good enough one. And I looked at there's a, you know, huge number of them. Out of those, only three are anywhere close to our demographics. So we're going to start with those three and look at some of these questions. We've already done this with the EWC council locally and got, you know, really good answers to some of these questions. And then we're going to get the baseline from the larger community and then go back to EWC and work with them and see if we can set up a set of best practices that can be established, you know. There's no one manual for this because since it is an emergency warming center, they tend to be varied, very, so incredibly varied by community. But let's get some basic baselines on this so that we make sure that if something does come before city council, you have a baseline to consider because no one could expect you to be experts on emergency warming centers in rural Colorado. And we're not expecting to be at the end of this either, but at least a basic baseline to say, okay, I can understand that. That makes sense. I have answers to those questions. I can make an informed decision. And this didn't make it into the presentation because it so often gets forgotten. But we do have the VOA shelter and they often do have beds open. That is a high barrier shelter. So some of the people who are going to the emergency warming shelter just don't fit those needs. But, you know, there is that one option. So that's the end of our presentation and we're happy to take any questions you have or just leave it completely open to general discussion.
And I'm just going to add one more thing real quick. Jamie's working on mapping and they're working with a Realtor and and actually pinpointing where some of these locations can be can be found. And Luke's research approach, I think, is is really relevant because we did experience some issues where it was damaged last year and had to be shut down. And there's a lot of issues with, you know, finding volunteers and all these other things. And I think this research that Luke's talking about is going to be able to answer a lot of those questions, working with Nina and some of all these other partners.
So would you guys like to sit down and answer questions or do you or Mike, do you want to come up? And yeah, why don't you come up? And then we'll we'll get questions from the counselors. We have, we're going to take about forty five minutes for the questions and answers here. If it starts to go long or if you feel like you're not getting what you need, we might be able to take a little bit more. But we, since we have an agenda, we need to get through many topics. I want to make sure that we're keeping on time and on schedule. If you have questions after, then I would say write them down and we can get those to people that can respond to you. So who has questions to ask? Go ahead, Trulie.
Okay, so let me start, I guess, Mike, with some of your, some of your stats. You 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 talked briefly about the homeownership versus rental.
Yes.
And can we go back to that slide? Because I think in there you also talk about need and you 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 mentioned, I think, perhaps off off the cuff that you think the rental is low. So could you address that? Because I was also surprised to see the high level of homeownership in the community, which is impressive. But how do we determine that homeownership is more important than rental?
Yeah, I don't think one's more important than the other. I think it's what kind of inventory that we have and what's the demand. So today, occupancy rate on the rental exceeds ninety percent. So it's closer to ninety five percent on occupancy. I think it's ninety two right now. So that tells me that there's still headroom for rental to come in. I I also, see, I think that where we were is probably, that's ownership. And then the needs assessment, I think, was this right here. Yes. So with with that kind of occupancy rate and and it's not just my opinion. If you look at the developers, they are racing to create multifamily because there's an opportunity when they look at the market today, right? So you have, there's a property going in at Three Springs that is slated to do to do maybe three or four phases that when complete could be four hundred units of multifamily at market rent.
For rental, not.
That's correct. Yeah, and so I actually believe and and this is just based on statistics is that eventually we will, because of the developers actually focused on multifamily right now, with the occupancy rate being so high, that the the market will will level out and we'll have plenty of inventory coming to the market within the next twenty four months. Where I think we're going to be lagging is in the for sale component. Because that's harder inventory to create than multifamily.
Yeah, and and so I think as a as a, you know, perhaps that's for the council to discuss that we continue to build on the rental side specifically at the lower levels of AMI.
Yeah, so there's on the rental side, the lower levels of AMI would potentially be light tech projects. Those are tax credit projects. We don't have any light tech like the residents at Durango is a light tech project. We don't have any light tech projects on the on the table right now. VOA is thinking about using some private activity bonds.
What is VOA?
The Volunteers of America. They they did a a unit and it was senior housing in Three Springs. And they were also involved in the Luminary property on on Thirty Second. They have an interest to do so, again, to do another project using some private activity bonds that we have, we have rolled over. That's an opportunity. It's not far enough down the road for us to say that's a bona fide project yet. But so to answer your question, Counselor, light tech projects would be all and light tech is all multifamily, all rental. We we should encourage that. I think the market will address the multifamily with what we have in the pipe and what is being built right now. So that I I feel like that's getting, we're going to see more and more inventory on the rental side with without us really spurring that. Where I think we really need to to try to try to enable or be a catalyst for is the single family home product inventory in that probably one hundred to one forty range. And for us to figure out how we subsidize that inventory.
Okay, that's well, do I continue or?
We go to the next question and then we'll come back to you. So who, Counselor?
Mike, I'll just stay with you on this. Just a couple of questions. The Prop one twenty three requirements, it looks like we're using that as a gauge for how much affordable housing we could build in a given year.
Yeah, it's a good target because those are requirements that we have to hit in order for us to stay in the program. So we're pretty hyper focused on meeting those requirements. And again, I gave justification for that in terms of future funding sources.
Right. The the four hundred units, and I hit you with this question yesterday, I just don't know. The the four hundred units that were touted as a two thousand and twenty four, what we put out, any idea? It was assumed by me that we were talking about affordable, that number is not affordable, obviously. So I just need to get corrected on that.
No, that I'll and I'll come back to you with exactly what that four hundred units are. I have not heard that number, but more than likely, those are are new new units, whether it's affordable or not affordable. But I'll find out exactly how many units we brought to, whether it's affordable or not in two thousand and twenty four. And then what component of that is is affordable.
Great, all right, thank you. The fifty five percent ownership in Durango.
We're gonna, we're gonna go on to the next person and then come back to.
Sorry, we're doing one question.
Then we'll move on, just to make sure we get to everybody's questions. So did you have a question?
Yes, ma'am. Mike, we talked about that person, either new hire or or pre-allocated resource a person within the comm dev for Prop one twenty three goals. Would that be more on the administrative backend, like fulfilling those those like backfilling, like the administrative components of it? Or they look at funding opportunities for how do we make sure that we're accomplishing some of these goals? And 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 looking for other opportunities as we get to this kind of like end of the funding?
Yeah, good question. So housing is without any resources today, right? We will bring on two resources within the next two weeks. One starts next week, the other one the week after. The person that you're specifically talking about will be more focused on the admin and policy. So we have to change policy, we have to change code in order to meet that fair share agreement that I'm working on with Jamie. The other person will be program management. And that program is is a little bit more focused on how do we participate in the capital stack? Where do we go get funding? What are the projects that we can go incentivize? How do we find public private partnerships, et cetera, et cetera?
Perfect, yeah, I just want to make sure that your resources are not being expended trying to look for opportunities and those persons are able to procure some of those. That's great, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have people.
Oh, Mike, I still have one question on Prop one, two, three. Okay, so what we have one hundred and eighty four units in the queue to meet our obligations under those regulations by two thousand and twenty six. Okay, so how many more do we have to start? Okay, so how many more do we have to start to meet our end game in twenty twenty six?
That's a good question. We probably need a hundred and twenty to a hundred and thirty to meet our objective. And so Rivergate, the the Rivergate will get us there. Close, get us close. I think we're we're gonna need a couple of infill projects, which exists, and then we're gonna need some some scale.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Counselor Buell?
Yes. Yesterday at the Alliance meeting, Emily Witpegozep, she presented on Prop one two three and how they're really struggling to meet the requirements. And she was saying that they've had like teachers and EMTs that are like, make five hundred dollars too much. And so they're trying to go after some legislation to help that. Do you feel like we're gonna be in that same boat? I know we're a little bigger and different.
I think we're exactly in the same boat. The challenge with Prop one two three is it's focused on a hundred percent AMI for ownership and eighty percent AMI for rental as the as what they're willing to subsidize. If we had inventory today at a hundred percent AMI, let's just say we had forty homes at a hundred percent AMI, we would struggle to qualify people to get in there for ownership, rental all day long. But homeownership a hundred percent AMI is very, very difficult to qualify. So we have the ability to apply for what's called rural resort on on the Prop one two three. And it's a project by project basis. So every single project, we have to apply for rural resort. There's five counties in Colorado that have the ability to apply for rural resort. We're one of them. And that allows us to go up to a hundred and twenty AMI, which is, there's a huge difference between being able to qualify somebody at a hundred versus a hundred and twenty. And you wouldn't think it's that that big. The threshold is amazing. Yeah, so we we really do, and I think DOLA is looking at that and realizing that in communities like ours, a hundred percent AMI is not gonna cut it. There's no way.
Counselor Gonzalez, you had another question?
Oh, yes, so we go back to, okay, so regarding regarding the unhoused, I think Luke and Bryce, can you go to the slides? So Luke, you you said that was a hundred and fourteen thousand that went to support community partners.
That was in twenty twenty four through United Way Funding. That doesn't count the Answee costs, that doesn't count joint sales tax costs, yeah.
That's what I wanted to know. So and then you said, you mentioned a three hundred and twenty five thousand.
The three hundred and twenty five thousand is every cent we gave to United Way in twenty twenty four. And as I said, a good portion of that goes to groups that do secondary or partially direct care to the unhoused. But we just covered the groups here, so you could just get a really big snapshot of the groups that do direct unhoused care. Yeah, if you go back, you go to one four.
So this is what I was after, right? So you show a hundred and fourteen that the city gave directly to these nonprofits. And then the three hundred and twenty five is the City of Durango Community.
Support funding that goes to the United Way and they have a grant, they have basically a grant approval process that they manage. And then it goes to city council for approval every year. And like I said, a lot of those do direct support to the unhoused, but it's not their core mission and indirect support to the unhoused. And so a good portion of that also goes to unhoused supports.
And and so then Bryce, you mentioned that, you know, you're not including in this number, law enforcement and cleanup and that sort of thing.
Tourism and a lot of things I didn't mention.
So is it, is it possible to get that number, how much we are spending for cleanup and for law enforcement because specifically?
We can. It's interesting, and just to be completely transparent, how we get into those those statistics. And I've been working with ACM Brammer on a dashboard. We want to, we want to gather more facts on on, I mean, we we really want to know if we're going up or we're going down and not just depending on people from Manor or our partners, if we have more homeless in town or less. So we're really trying to create a dashboard and everything else to get that data, but we do have the data in our internal system. And we compile that by people that keep where they get their mail. And we can see where they get their mail and we are assuming that those people are unhoused. And that's, that's kind of how we get that data now. So it's pretty hard to get the data and it's completely accurate.
So I I would like for us to get that number. I think it would be, I think we could make more informed decisions if we actually knew the the full cost. And perhaps redirect it towards something that was more impactful for the community.
We'll start working on that. Bob did something very similar just on crime, you know, four years ago. And it was astronomical what we're spending just on crime in our community with EMS and fire and everything else, and this could be very similar.
And you're gonna see some big spikes if we look at a five year, right during, right before, right during and right after Purple Cliffs, and then a slow decline because the cleanup effort was what, five hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, and it's gonna be construed.
That was shared with the county.
It's gonna be construed too, because we ramped up our efforts, our proactive efforts, and that's gonna be hard. The numbers aren't gonna tell everything. We're gonna have to look at it like he said. I mean, we have two gentlemen back there, literally this morning, they were cleaning up camps. That's why his pants are all dirty. And so they take a more proactive approach. It's almost like DUI. You could say we reduced our DUIs by twenty five percent last year. What does that mean? Well, we increased them. And you could say either way, well, we worked harder or we have less of a problem. And so we really ramped up our efforts with these guys going out. So you're gonna see a spike there too, but we just have to look at that and make sense of it once we get the data.
Okay, thank you. I I have another question that.
Counselor D'Cosso.
Yeah, just a quick question on timeline for reporting back. A warming center is critical, obviously, as we're in the winter. So just can you, can you talk just a little bit about what you expect to have?
That's such a great question. I expect to be able to finish my initial research within a month. And that's gonna really dovetail because Jamie's working so hard to get a map together. The EWC Council's working so hard to look at properties. And so I will be working on one track of just researching best practices while they continue their work. And my work doesn't impact theirs at all. They can continue doing their work. And then we can come together, hopefully, with, you know, actual proposals of actual properties that are found and see, does it meet, the, the, does their, does the proposals meet what the state is currently doing and we can learn from?
And I'm assuming we need that time anyway to find potential locations. Things are working in parallel. We need some time anyway to figure that those things out as well as the answers to many of them.
Yeah, I mean, the hope was to walk away from here with an indication from council of a direction of where you would like it to go. And if that's the direction, we will continue to work with the groups on finding a suitable location. And I think that's probably gonna be one of our bigger obstacles.
And the mistake in the past has been that we can wait till the last minute when this takes time, even to get an apartment, it takes a month. And so, and then finding a location is very difficult. Probably one of the best locations we've seen is Donna Mae's, but we see all the conflict with that as well.
So, you know, we gotta be able to get around sprinklers, in my opinion. I I mean, we can't have a space where people can't go to sleep at night. That's inhumane treatment.
Counselor Yasi?
Okay, so the sprinkler ordinance, when was that implemented?
It's part of our building codes. We operate under the two thousand eighteen building codes right now. And that is a requirement for a place of assembly, which is what this would be. There are a degree of leniency. We have a new building official, and so that's definitely helping us get a better idea to wrap our head around what we can in the code. And he has the ability to basically look at things for life safety as a whole. So if we have a building that doesn't have sprinklers, we have to have something that would operate as an equivalent in the building code mindset. So we're talking about egress, yeah, yeah, with egress and and making sure that there's adequate ways for people to get in and out of the building.
All right, and so that's what the fire department's working off of is our city code, even if it's to sprinklers. They have a different regulation.
There are several different codes that the International Code Council puts out, and there is the International Fire Code. That is usually what the DFPD is gonna work from, and then every other code will be with us. Ultimately, the decision for sprinklers does come down to our building official.
Thank you.
It's just been on that one point, though. If we have an emergency declaration, though, we can, we can declare, if it's below fifteen degrees, we can declare that a sprinkler requirement can be waived because it's an emergency situation for health and human safety. Is that, I I think I've seen this in other municipalities, so I was just asking if that's an option for us.
It is something that's in other ordinances, but I would caution the potential liabilities that come with that.
And that's gonna be part of the research. If we hit, it's like, you know, a tree, if I hit, did you enact emergency ordinance? Great. What did your fire department recommend? So we will also have multiple cases of best practices for communities that are already doing this. That doesn't make the newspapers. That doesn't make something that you can immediately research.
Sure.
That's why it's important with the research he's doing to find out what Nina can supply, because there are, you know, whether we're having trouble getting volunteers and stuff. If you need two people to watch and have your egress and have people run the center, if we're gonna be able to maintain that.
And typically what you see when they ordinances that typically will involve people from meeting codes and ordinances are declarations of emergency for a wildfire hurricane, something large scale. For something smaller like this, it's it's more, it's less common to see something like that.
So you're, you're on the twenty eighteen building codes, you said. Your, next year, you're planning to adopt the newer ones?
Twenty twenty four.
Twenty twenty four, thank you. I didn't know what year it was. And then in those or in that building code, there is changes to this particular issue we're talking about for the sprinkler, is there or no?
There's always updates to the code. There, there's always gonna be a requirement for fire sprinklers and the DFPD is gonna push for fire sprinklers and in most cases for something like that. But we, what we don't have adopted right now is two things. One, there's an appendancy that deals with life safety issues that gives us some alternatives. There's also an appendix called the International Existing Building Code, which gives us more flexibility for existing buildings, which will definitely help us with our historic buildings. So those two are ones that we plan to adopt that we don't have right now.
Okay, and that would help us make, and you're proposing that you're gonna bring changes to our building code slowly, starting next year?
Oh, no, we're bringing every all at once.
Someone had mentioned slowly at one point to me, and I was like, why would they do that in little chunks? But okay, okay. So this winter is what we have to figure out because next winter we'll have more tools.
We're shooting for a January one to have them be in place, but we gotta make sure and review them because right now they are written across the board for everyone to use and we have to pick and choose and go through, okay, that doesn't apply to us. We want to amend it, take out this or amend it for this. So that's what we're doing right now is working on what do we want to amend in anticipation of bringing that to you in November, December timeframe for starting to January first on that.
But potentially then we'll have more tools to deal with this particular situation. Okay.
Counselor Woodruff?
Yeah, appreciate it.
Come to Gonzalez.
I can only keep going in the sprinkler system. It sounds like the code and the fire, building code and fire code aren't necessarily aligned. Probably mostly, right? But you said that ultimate jurisdictional authority is the inspector, right?
Our building official, yes.
But does DFPD still have the authority to still come and shut something down independent of the building inspector if they deem it unsafe?
Under our agreement with them, they, unless it is absolutely positively unsafe, can't set foot in there, we have to get permission from the city manager's office before we shut anything down. They have to come to us. They will come to me for that. And I will discuss what the life safety issue is, if something could be done in the meantime, if it's an immediate need. And then I'll work with city manager's office to do that.
So do they come to the city manager's office for like restaurant, when when they're shutting down a restaurant for, for like some sort of like fire code? They do come to?
They have, but we, every time it gets to that level, I would go back and say, give me from the fire marshal documentation of why this is a life safety, and then they were able to figure something else out. And so it's come, but we've never, maybe there's only been one, I think it was a hotel. Days in that they did some reconstruction that was just deemed unsafe. Outside of that, since I've been here, that's the only one that we have temporarily shut down.
You don't want there to be like some big, huge battle between who decides on what can.
Working on definitely developing the expectations, and for the most part, DFPD has made it clear that they will default to the building official as the representative of enforcing the codes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Gonzalez? So I I think my questions were answered. I just wanted to show my support for the warming center and just taking action on however we can make that happen as quickly as possible. Any other?
Okay, so my question is, okay, say if we go ahead and declare an emergency situation for the warming center and we do some kind of variance on the sprinklers and something happens to somebody, that they get injured in there, are we responsible because we went and kind of changed the code?
I mean, I will defer to Mark, but it does open us up to liabilities, I believe.
Yeah, I mean, anytime you're gonna deviate from a nationally accepted code, it could create liability. So, but I mean, we live in a world where there's always liability. Whatever you guys decide to do, we'll be able to defend. So there's never a perfect solution with a code. It seems like you guys are hoping that there's gonna be some changes that'll give you tools to fix this next year. I wouldn't count on that. Codes tend to get more restrictive than more, less restrictive. So it's a difficult issue, but you will have the opportunity at the time they adopt the twenty twenty four code to make modifications that you are, think are appropriate for the community. And I would certainly be able to defend those if we're, someone brings a liability suit against us.
All right, thank you. Any other questions about housing?
Just one comment. I know this is not exactly in your job descriptions that you, what you signed up for as city staff. So really appreciate you guys leaning in and taking on an issue that is tough, very tough issues.
Like, yeah, the cross functional teams and the cross functional aspects that's been built here really helps all of us.
Yeah, I'm excited that you're actually looking at properties and is helping, like, it seems like we're in alignment and working toward a solution. So, thank you.
Counselor Woodruff, you had another question?
One real quick, when talking about the liability, I had this earlier. If we deviated from our building code and created an emergency shelter, would that be extra insurance that would be, like, what would the taxpayer cost be for an additional insurance premium possibly? Are we talking thousands of dollars, hundreds of dollars? Like, what sort of amended policy would we potentially need for something like this?
I would have to defer to Mark.
For risk assessment?
I don't think it would change any. I mean, I'm not an insurance agent. I don't know. But the, from what, from what I know about, you know, seriously, and the way they operate, I don't think it would change anything. You're not going so far outside of what governments do that it's gonna, again, I don't, I need to qualify that. I'm not sure what an insurance company would do. But my guess would be they're not gonna do anything if you modify the code and you have the justification for it. And you have, you guys aren't gonna do something that's gonna create liability or negligence, like, it's not gonna be gross negligence to pass an ordinance to put a warming shelter in. And that's where an insurance company was in a, you've now adopted a policy that creates a situation, there could be gross negligence, that would be an insurance problem. So I don't see that happening, but I do have to qualify that. I just, I'm not sure what insurance companies are doing in Colorado or any state at this point.
Especially if we're deviating from the building code and not sprinkling it and then, and then the insurance, like, something was potentially preventable.
But just remember, I mean, what you're trying to do is prevent people from, you know, being in a place and getting caught in a fire. And there are ways around that. I mean, the waivers that they got for having a fire watch is is a solution around it. I mean, that meets the legal requirements, that avoids the liability issues. I mean, if you have a fire watch person, if that's a competent person and a fire happens, that's your defense to it. Someone's gonna come in and say, oh, you should have had a sprinkler system. And we would say, well, no, we were above board, we set up the center, we had fire watch people in place, and that mitigates the liability or the fire risk.
And they do hope to have a coordinator position for next year, that's a staffed position, as well as volunteers. And so this is all stuff we can apply with training of volunteers and staff that they have safety fire training that will fit the recommendations of the building code for the offsets.
I think it's vital that he's asking these questions because one of the problems we ran into last year, is it gonna be open or is it not gonna be open? And it's critical that they know whether it's gonna be open or not, so they can prepare to stay warm for the night. And that's a safety issue for us, whether somebody's gonna freeze to death or not, if they can count on the center. So it either needs to be done right with this research and that it can be operated, and if they're just not gonna say, well, we can't run it this week or we can't run it tonight, right, when people are depending.
When you, when you say they, is it, is it somebody within our organization? Or is it a third party nonprofit organization that would be or controlling or?
The EWC Council has got members of Nina, Manor, Red Cross, still CCO.
Yeah, that'll sort of be a part of it, community member.
And and then also people, community members like Mike Todd here. And so that's the current, and so I just started this research this week. And so I can provide the city council the really thorough answers that the EWC council gave me to most of these questions. And what's gonna happen is as I do my research, I'll have better questions to follow up with the EWC so we can have a very thorough report from them based on the baseline of expectation of services around the state. As varied as that can be, we will get a baseline and we can do that within a month's time.
And I wouldn't look at it that we're waiving any building requirements. There is built in there, the building official has the ability to look at equivalencies. So whereas we may not require the fire hydrants, we are gonna. So whereas we may not require the fire hydrants, we are going to require heightened somewhere else to make sure we have the life safety issue. So there is a life safety evaluation done on the structure to make sure that it's going to meet what we the standards that we want.
Thank you.
Any other questions, councillors? About housing. Mike back here.
Oh, I got time on housing. I got questions. Okay.
Go ahead.
I thought we were running on time.
No, we're good on housing. We're going to actually, we're we can, we can go all the way until 10:30 with this topic.
Okay.
We're going to take a little bit off of tourism just because it probably isn't. There was a couple of different people that presented for housing, so we're going to, if we need to, we're going to take a little bit from tourism. I mean, we'll we'll still get plenty of time for each of these topics. Um but go ahead.
Okay. Mike, just a couple of questions. Uh the residences at at Durango, um for the the folks that would occupy the residences at Durango, um are we doing any sort of case management? Is there a case management component and who is going to be managing this facility after they get move-ins?
Yeah, the um the developers, TWG, it's a organization that does light tech projects out of Indianapolis. They have hired a third-party property management company that works for them, um works nationwide on their properties. We're not involved in the case management, we're not involved in um filling those units, managing those units. It's uh it's, the city's not involved in any way, shape or form. We can refer people um and help market and advertise, but we're not involved in that. We have talked to Housing Solutions uh to help them transition people from, for example, Asparrow into those units. Something that Bryce and I have talked about quite a bit, sorry, chief, have I have talked about quite a bit, is uh is that um any inventory is good inventory because it moves people through through the uh through the pipe or or through the continuum, if you will. And so if if we can get this in place, we can move some people from Asparrow into those units. It frees up units at Asparrow, which is under thirty percent AMI.
I I guess my questions, uh I'm a little concerned that we're putting people into housing, but we're not supporting them to be successful in housing. I I think the pipeline is accurate. I think the support that they get that is is where my concern is, so that it's successful. Is this, who is going to be overseeing the success of case management and those pieces within that group? That it is successful or not successful?
And I think continuum of properties under what we call the Coordinated Entry System that reports directly to the balance of state as a continuum of care model. The current um organization that is the head of that umbrella is South Housing Solutions for the Southwest. Evelyn Flam is the chair of that group. We are currently setting up a group above that as required by state law. I am currently a member of the steering committee that helps up set up the governance for that so that we can work as a more regional head and look at Montezuma and not just La Plata and help what's working here to work there as well. Because we are seeing well, like a kind of mini growth like we saw five years ago starting to happen in Montezuma. And so we're working with those regional partners. But yes, there's a continuum of care and that includes Nina, Mana, Community Compassion Outreach, Community Investment Alliance, Southwest Housing Solutions. Um it includes um another partner that we're processing, that's just a community uh management partnerships. And they mostly focus on families. And so in they meet monthly to go with through their list of people who are really good fits and make sure that not only do they get a space at Lumion, a space at Asparrow, a hotel room voucher, a housing voucher, but all of those necessary wraparound services to try to make them be successful. So that is in place currently and it's doing very good work.
Good.
Uh councillor. We're going to stay on the topic for a minute. And so Mike, you mentioned uh earlier in um regarding the RFQ for residents. I think it was the very first one on the list.
Uh Rivergate.
I'm sorry?
Rivergate.
Rivergate.
Yes, ma'am.
And why the delay in the RFQ?
Um, good question. Uh couple, couple of reasons. Once we put on our RFQ, we have to act on it. Uh and we don't just don't have the capacity today to uh A, put out the RF. We could probably get the RFQ out, but then we don't have the capacity to to really move forward with a project. And so um as soon as I get some.
Operate on that? What do you mean when you say?
I have zero resources in terms of personnel. Literally, I have nobody in the department.
To to um so not not related to construction, but?
No, to to manage an RFQ and to manage an award and then to manage the uh the project kickoff and then to to all that. So I'm just waiting to get some resources in so that we can do a proper timeline and be as expeditious as possible. It it would be a disservice for me to put out an RFQ and then not be able to manage that project properly, yeah, in any way, shape or form, so.
Can you bring in a consultant?
Um, we could. Um challenge with that is we're outsourcing it. And I'd rather us have control over the terms. Um this is a project where we own the property. We should be able to dictate the terms of what that looks like. And we should have um a seat at the table, a very firm seat at the table for a public-private partnership. If we outsource it, uh now we have a consultant that is really creating those terms for us. And if we can just wait a few weeks, I think.
I mean, yeah, it's like key. It's uh there's two people that transitioned out to take positions at the state. So that's what he means that we don't have any resources because two people left our housing division. We have offers out that have been accepted by two employees to replace those positions. That'll be filling them here in the next two weeks. So the resources are coming. It's just we need a couple of weeks for them to get on, to get involved, understand, and then move forward with it.
Okay, I I I think that helps because it at just from that, it doesn't sound like it was forthcoming. So like, you know, to delay it and delay it, we know that that it kills projects.
I I get it. I I would have loved to get that out in February. And um, yeah, it's, i- if if we can just be a little patient, I will get that out. That'll be um probably first order of business with the resources that we get.
Thank you.
So we have about ten more minutes for this topic if councillors have any other questions. And if not, we'll take a little short break and we'll come back and start talking about tourism, so.
Sorry, I've got one other question then.
We've got time.
Can you talk about housing as it exists outside of our county? Um we've got a lot of folks that are commuting in, obviously. Is is what are we doing in any conversations that we're having with municipalities and counties that are outside of our area that are still supplying some workforce to us?
Uh we have zero conversations with um San Juan County, Aztec, Farmington. Um, you know, they they have very different challenges than we do. Uh they do have inventory, they do have uh more affordable um scenarios. And that's why we're probably seeing a workforce that's that's commuting. Um what what I'd really like to do, if if we can, is create the inventory here. Uh because when when we rely on inventory in neighboring communities, um there's a lot of leakage in terms of of the economy and rep sec sales tax revenue. Uh so the more that we can build here, even if it's within the county, the better. But we just have not had any conversations around, you know, how and I'm not sure that uh that us creating partnerships to send people there uh is beneficial for our community. Um it's.
That might have been much further than I was talking about for sure. But but I think that there's an element of, we know what's happening. So do we have the statistics on on what that is? Can can we do anything to?
No, it's I um. We do not. No, we do not. And it hasn't been a, we can, um I think it's readily available. Uh it just hasn't been a priority for us. But if I'd be more than happy to come back and say, here's how we compare to Farmington, Aztec, Agosa, Cortez, Mangas, um and any other community. I think those are probably the communities that we would compare to.
Yeah, and I might have taken an oblique route to that. But my my concept there was, are we building housing and it's being filled by folks moving in from other states? Or are we building housing and getting some of our local workers to move closer in? Would be something I would I would love to see that we're tracking and and can, you know, pay attention to.
I think um so we do have the statistics of who's buying the homes. And it it um it's very, very clear that higher-end homes are all, there there are very few locals buying higher-end homes. Uh it's probably, I'm guessing here, but my guess is it's in the eighty, ninety percentile of all those have out of state or or out of zip code addresses. Um and Bob Allen runs a report. Uh it and I've seen that report and it's pretty amazing where these people are coming from. I mean, it's New York, Chicago, Florida, California. Um it's no longer just Denver, Dallas, Phoenix. It's literally, it's it's nationwide that that those those second homes are being purchased by. But the challenge I think we have right now is how do we create inventory below, you know, in that workforce area? Because that's where the demand, we really have a a short supply of. And it's it's a funding game. We we're trying to participate in the capital stack. We only have a few chips to put in and that's why we're so reliant on these external monies, on the grant monies. Is we really don't have the ability to say, we're going to mo- we're going to change that capital stack and make that deal happen by infusing half a million dollars or a million dollars worth of infrastructure or what have you. We just, um I know this is a little off-topic, but we probably have three million dollars. Um and we've got to keep that power drive for as many scale projects as we can. Because there's no sustainable funding source long-term that we that that we have confidence to say, well, let's spend a million dollars here on this project, another million or half a million on that project. We're going to run out of funding really fast.
Any other questions? We've got about five more minutes and then we'll take a five-minute break. One's favorite word. Anyone else? Any questions? All right. Okay, we'll take a five-minute break. It's ten twenty right now. Um let's actually take seven minutes, but we'll come back at ten twenty-seven and then we'll start in on tourism.
Thank you.
Oh, that's going to be it. They're doing a nice job.
Again. Getting seated and we're pulling up some slides. Right. Mike's going to talk about destination marketing and management, tourism and growth potential. Each topic today is slated for an hour. We, we took a little bit more time with housing because we basically were combining a couple of different things. And then if we can get through topics, we're going to move on quicker. We're going to work through lunch, but I will give you breaks. So don't worry about that. And so I just want to give you guys a heads up that that's how we're working. So if we get through all the topics, we can get out of here a little bit earlier, but we definitely have the time and space to stay until three to make sure that we cover everything in depth and make sure that we don't miss any questions or information that needs to be shared. So for that, I'm going to pass it over to Mike. How long is your presentation? How long do you expect it?
Yeah, I'll try to race through this.
Well, don't race too much, but.
Maybe 15 minutes.
15 minutes. And then do you want me to give you a heads up?
That'd be great.
Okay. At what timeframe? Like, I'll tell you when it's 10.
Perfect.
So that you know. Okay. And then we'll go to questions.
Okay. So I'm going to talk about inventory and capacity so that we have a decent idea in context of where tourism is, what kind of capacity we have, and then talk briefly about programming. There was a roundup yesterday that we did a listening session with internal stakeholders, so the tourism community, and some of the slides were lifted from there. So you'll see a change of format because of that. Currently, City of Durango has 1,822 hotel rooms. And when I looked at that statistic, I was a little surprised. I thought it was a little bit less. There's probably 200 more units coming onboard later this year with the, the two hotels or two brands on, on Fifth. So that'll push us above 2,000 hotel rooms within the city proper. There are 36 properties, I'm sorry, yeah, 36 properties, soon to be 37 or 38, however we want to count that. And there's 125 short-term rentals within the city limits. La Plata County has 700 plus hotel rooms and they have close to 1,800 STRs within the county and, and climbing. So the total for our area or our region is over 2,500 hotel rooms and over 1,800 short-term rentals. So we have pretty decent capacity. When you think about heads and beds, that exceeds 10,000 bedrooms when you, when you unpack that. The average occupancy for hotels is approximately 64% and for STRs it's closer to 52. And that's pretty unanimous, whether it's in, in town or in the county. The average daily rate for hotels is approximately $155 and STR is 352. And if we do the math on the, on the occupancy and the daily rate, that's how we get to our largest tax. Occupancy rate by week, Jose and I looked at this yesterday. Jose asked me a really good question. He said, what happened to Q1 for, for our, our occupancy rate compared to the state? And I told him I thought it was just March. And as I unpacked it last night, it, it wasn't March. It was January and February. In March, we actually did a little bit better. It was the exact reverse of what I had told Jose yesterday. And Jose said, don't you think it was weather related? And at the time I said, no, I don't think so, you know, but it was. And exactly, he was spot on. It was a poor snowfall. We didn't have the visitation that we expected for, in the snow season and it created a really soft Q1 for us. So if you look at annual hotel occupancy for 2023, 64.8, 2024, 65.3. I mean, that's, they're, they're still so close together. Statewide, we exceeded the state. That was 57.8. So we, we traditionally outperform the state in terms of occupancy rate in this area. That was not true for our quarter. So Q1 for 2024 was 51. Q2 for 2025 was 49. I expected a much bigger decrease, but it was pretty darn close. The state had a really strong Q1. There was a lot of snow in Summit County and they did extremely well. Probably took a lot of market share from Utah. When we think about in-state versus out-of-state, Q1, Q1 2025, and then out-of-state, Q1 24, 2025, you can see that the numbers are almost identical. So this is tracking. We don't expect any changes there. If you look at where people are coming from, Denver, Albuquerque, Phoenix, Dallas are the top destinations that, or originations that are, are coming here. If we look at this in a different kind of graph, this is what that looks like. These are where our people are coming from. It'll be interesting to see with our direct flight coming from Houston, how that's going to impact our summer. One of the things that we're talking about is getting ahead of that, doing campaigns, targeting Houstonians, and, and really thinking about how that is, is going to change our numbers and whether or not it makes sense to do some kind of consideration of a revenue guarantee with the airport to keep that year round. Because right now it's only seasonal. These are the 10 disciplines that Visit Durango Destination Marketing and Management brings to the table. I'm not going to go into these, but as I started to get really familiar with that organization, bringing them inside of Prosperity, really understanding what they do for a living and how that stacked, this is the best, the best slide I can use to say this is what, what that organization does for a living. I'm going to go into just a, a little bit of detail on the programming. The Welcome Center, there are about 30, 30,000 or just north of 30,000 people that walk through the door in a year, which is an impressive statistic. That's about 3,000 people and it's, it's a little bit seasonal, but that's about 3,000 people per month. The, the statistic that they have is, is anybody that comes through the Welcome Center is twice as likely to, to be a repeat visitor than if they do not walk through the Welcome Center, which was, that's a very impressive statistic. One of the things that we're trying to do with the Welcome Center is leverage this asset and actually upgrade it. Right now, the, I think it's a little dated. I don't want to be facetious, but I have heard people call it restrooms and brochures. And I, I, I don't, don't think that that's, that's how we want to be represented in the community. So putting some digital assets in place, the people that we have there are awesome. They're, they're part-time resources. Most of them are retired teachers. And there's one thing that they have in common. They love Durango and they love to talk about it. Event recruitment, one of the things that, that we have secured is the Outdoor Media Summit. We'll have over 100 people, journalists here from all over the country that are focused on outdoor. And that conference moves from city to city and we have secured that conference to be here in October, which is great because that's shoulder season for us. And then we're ramping up pretty quickly to, to discuss how the UCI World Championships will impact us. It's 2030 is the World Championships, but we'll actually have a race in 2028 and 2029. So 2028 is right around the corner. And talking about what we need to do to prepare for that, we're heavily involved with, with Iron Horse Bicycle Classic and Gage Sippy, who's spearheading this, this event. We have a person within the organization dedicated to travel trade. So what this person does is a salesperson and literally attends all of these conferences and seeks to create appointments and it's group sales, tour bookings, et cetera, et cetera. And they're, they literally get ahead of it and try to book tours a year in advance. So 2025 is, they've already secured almost 1,000 rooms for 2025 and that's a result of, of last year's activity. So all the conferences they're attending this year are really, literally trying to book conferences, mini-conferences, tours for, for next year. They do a pretty good job with that. There's a person dedicated to public relations. It's a little bit different than what Tom does, but we're really trying to integrate those two. This person is very focused on media relations with all the journalists that cover tourism, cover outdoor rec, et cetera, et cetera. This person has done a pretty good job. They, they were able to, to secure a article in Conde Nast and Conde Nast had, this article specifically in digital format received over 5 million views. So it highlighted Silverton and Durango and the properties there as a destination. Another success story is they, they were able to secure an 18-page spread in a New Zealand mountain bike magazine featuring Durango and the trail system and the culture, which, you know, we'll, we'll see how that translates in terms of visitations from our New Zealanders. But it's things like this that are really worth their weight in gold in terms of, of promoting our area that people really here don't, don't see or know about. There's also a sustainability person. Most of you guys have met Waylon. We're trying to integrate Waylon with Marty and make sure that there's, there's a strong overlap in terms of sustainability. The Trail Ambassador Program is pretty successful. What we're doing now is taking this, this tent and that, that desk to the heavily populated trails during peak season and really talking about stewardship, providing information, being ambassadors. And we have volunteer organizations as well as not-for-profits that are helping us do that. One of the things that we're doing in the food and bev industry is, is taking compost and actually putting some intelligence behind that. So this device here, which is a pilot program, actually measures and weighs the compost and actually has a camera and tries to identify using AI what's in the compost and then gives that restaurant some information so that they understand what their food savings are. One of the things that's really important that will drive very heavily is the use of data in, in the destination management marketing organization. This is where the power of them being inside the city really comes to bear. When we look at employment's information from the airport, when we think about public safety information, when we think about community engagement information, when we think about library, I mean, we could go into almost every single entity that we have. How does that data cross-pollinate with visitations? And then how do we potentially create a dashboard and provide this kind of data out to our community? So they can help, we can help them with forecasting, not just in visitations, but in all kinds of data. And so I think it's really important that we become a facilitator and a collaborator of data. One of the things that we're asking and starting to express to our internal stakeholders is, is to opt in. We will redact their data, whether it's, it's train rides, lift tickets, et cetera, et cetera. There's a lot of power in consolidating that data and then being able to share that out to the community.
Wow, you did great. That was only 12 minutes. Gold Star, Mike.
Thank you.
Any questions for which counselors have questions on tourism? Counselor.
Go so first and then we'll go to Gonzo.
Yeah, real quick. Historical relation, number of hotel rooms. Do you know, 1900, is that following historical averages? Are we high? Are we low? Any idea?
I, I think it's all relative to how much tourism is a part of an entity's economy. I think for it being a third of our economy, we're, we're probably spot on. It's going to be very interesting to see how this new hotel with 200 rooms performs. If they come in and, and do extremely well and they're not necessarily taking all the market share away from the strater, then we'll have an idea that, yeah, there was capacity there. I think right now, if you look at the strater in peak times, it's completely sold out. So there's a good reason that they, they built that on the hill.
So thank you. So I, I wanted to bring up this topic for a couple of reasons. And for one thing, as I'm like, trying to wrap my head around all of the infrastructure projects that we have and parks projects that we have. It's like, the only way I could really see that we could continue to grow our economy is through tourism. And yet there seems to be a real conflict between our community and the tourists. And so now we are, the city is taking over Visit Durango. And I thought it gave us a real opportunity to change that narrative. And that's really why I wanted to bring this topic up. And so some of the questions that I have, and I'll, I'll start with one, is that, you know, what do we feel like the potential is given the scenario that's being presented? So is there currently, do we know how much sales tax comes from tourism? And is there a goal for the next year or a five-year scope?
Yeah. So I'm going to try to answer your question in a couple of different pieces. So in terms of, of community sentiment, I agree with you that there is a, a, a negative sentiment on tourism and that we have potentially reached capacity or maybe exceeded capacity in terms of tourism. One of the things that we're keenly aware of is that we need to change the narrative. And yesterday I talked about really focusing on the value of the visitor and it not being just in terms of seeing the visitor as a dollar sign. But the value of the visitor is really in the quality of life that the visitor enables for our community. And if we can create that narrative and make sure that our community realizes if not for, we would not have the quality of life. So if you take, if you take the visitor out of the equation, we cannot sustain Main Street and the restaurants and all the things that we love and enjoy about Durango. So we have to create that narrative through storytelling and make sure that we, we, we earn trust, we change the narrative and we, we change the perspective of the visitor in terms of its, in, in the value exchange that happens. In terms of like growth, I also think that we desperately need light industrial, that that would, that would increase some sales tax opportunities and revenue. So a, a pretty balanced economy is, is something that we, we should continue to strive for. Can we grow tourism? Yes. I think there's, there's opportunity to create some very specific, again, getting our arms around data and understanding what really is our capacity and then getting agreement with our community on what is our goal to inch up that capacity, right? So if there's buy-in and everybody agrees and everybody understands what our true capacity is, because right now, if you asked anybody on the street whether we have exceeded our capacity, they probably can't tell you what our hotel count is, probably don't know what our occupancy is, and they're just judging it based on traffic for, for them to get from here to there. And that might be a false indicator. So I do think that, that we have to get more detailed about what that growth objective is and what capacity we do have. I'm not sure that, that, that should be the 100% focus on growing our economy as opposed to entrepreneurship, economic gardening, specifically light industrial. I, I think it'd be a good exercise, counselor, for us to think about if we invested or put efforts into X, what kind of, of increase in sales tax revenue would that generate? And include tourism as probably the first candidate, candidate number one, but then look at other things like supermarket, Three Springs, light industrial, warehouse, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And we have not done that.
So, oh, I'm sorry.
Does anyone else want to go on to a question and we'll come back?
Yeah. And it's also a little bit of, like, kind of, I want to talk. I might have a question as I kind of go, just from some background. Well, I actually do have a question. So a big push, right? I think it's multifaceted. One, it's a balance between tourism and the narrative that we're communicating with our residents that live here because they're feeling the pressures of tourism, but then also that light industrial piece, which we had La Posta and that was kind of, you know, that next four, we had a county and city joint effort with the Alliance with a lot of entities to do that light industrial there. Is there, I know we got a presentation a year or two ago about some potential options for more light industrial spots. Is there any movement on anything there? I mean, to get businesses to move here too, we have to have affordable housing. So there's so many pieces to this puzzle, which is great that you are here overseeing it all now.
Well, that's the, that's the idea of Prosperity.
Yeah.
Grandview area is kind of filling that void, but there's, the problem is we don't have infrastructure there. And that's not really city. So in terms of city, the only thing we can really think about long-term, this is the long-term strategy is how do we get back to the table with the Southern U Tribe and talk about their desire, their appetite to have light industrial on La Posta and how do they participate potentially? If that, if that's not in the cards, then we probably should support the county and, and that developer doing something in the county and maybe do a water agreement with them or something because they're going to need water, right? Right now, that's the, that's the gating factor is water and sewer. But could they do a special sewer district there that even if we didn't annex and could they do water agreement with us? The answer is yes, but we'd have to do some cartwheels. So there's a lot of things to have happened in order for La Posta to go without annexation. That's why annexation was such a big deal. And I don't think our community realizes what, what a huge loss that was, right? I don't see any other place that we could, as far as the city's concerned, based on infrastructure, that we could, you know, create really strong light industrial, like a, like a light industrial park for, for growth. And there's pent-up demand. That, that developer had no less than 10 people wanting to do light industrial paths there with about 10,000 square foot per, per path. So, I mean, there's a huge demand right now.
Michael, you're talking about the expansions, Out Three Springs, La Posta. Do we have the water capacity to provide for all those businesses? Do we have the water capacity to provide for all those businesses and homes? Have to like do something about Lake Nakas?
That's a good question. I, I, I would not be able to answer that question. I, I would defer to, to probably Marty and some other folks within our organization to help me with that question in terms of capacity. At the time, we had capacity with Durango South Sanitation. And our engineering assumed we had capacity. And we, we actually designed a water line to go down to Jack Rabbit Lane in La Posta.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions around tourism? Go ahead, counselor.
Which kind of brings back tourism. I think also there's probably a lot of test cases out there, like live test cases of how not to do tourism. You look at Tahoe, you look at Barcelona. And so it gives us the opportunity to take a look at where they have and where they are currently and how they got to there. And so what can we do to try, try to make sure that we're working in concert with a lot of our, our residents to not echo some of those same sentiments? And I think part of that is that ambassador program. And so do we look into potentially expanding? Except right now, it just comes down to messaging and communication. And are we aligned in that messaging as an organization to ensure that when we are seeing people out there, ah, you know, damn traffic or there's, you know, there's too many tourists. How are we messaging and branding some of that to our constituents to ensure that we know what, what, what you all are saying and it'll hopefully be the, the same mouthpiece in, in some of those conversations? And maybe are there opportunities to expand that ambassador program?
Yep, that's, that's a great question. I think what we have to do as soon as we, so we've made an offer to somebody to come in and head up the, the tourism department or division, I should say. And I think first order of business will be not only to take stock and inventory of the destination management programming that we have. By the way, this person has deep experience in destination management, probably more so than destination marketing. And so I, I think you'll be happy to hear that. What does that brand look like? And then how do we continue to double down on destination management? Cause I, I think the marketing we do fairly well, the destination management piece is something that I think the community is looking for. And even though we continue to do it, there's, the awareness is not there, the branding is not there. So things like that ambassador program, how do we do, how do we do that? And, and make sure people see that in not just trail systems, but in other things that we're doing, right? Which is whether it's composting and, and Bevin Street or it just, it can leak into so many different sectors. We just have to have a unified brand of, of, of what that looks like. And then wave that flag continuously and then get the community involved as opposed to it being an us and that conversation, it being a us, right? It being a we conversation.
Small clarification, the ambassador program, we're talking about the red-shirted folks that run through bid. Is that correct? Am I thinking somebody else?
No, no, the, that's, that is the ambassador program, but that's on Main Street.
Yeah.
Those are telling people where to, where to go eat and what to do.
Or steamworks.
Helping them, yeah. They add steamworks. No, the ambassador is a, it's a trails ambassador program.
Trails ambassador.
That is, it's a collaboration between Visit Durango and San Juan Conservation and a bunch of Trails 2000, but I mean, there's a bunch of people involved in that.
Thanks.
So just getting back to this, you know, I'm thinking about growth opportunities just in terms of growing our sales tax so that we can do the infrastructure projects and quality of life. And so tourism, just because it was on my mind, given the transition. But what other opportunities are there? You mentioned light industrial, you mentioned entrepreneurship. But are we actively pursuing things for that? Jessica mentioned a project that seemed like it didn't work or something didn't happen that was supposed to happen. Is that still on the table? And then regarding entrepreneurship, I'm familiar with some of the things that happen like Startup Week. But do we actually have an incentive program for entrepreneurship? And is there something else or others?
We, we do. We have an economic incentive program that, that Jose helped create with, with our economic opportunity. So Tommy Crosby, at the time I was at the Alliance and, and, and so the business community had some, some comments and, and fingerprints on that. I think it's extremely well received. We just haven't been able to apply it. And what that, what that program does is assume future sales tax revenue and then create an incentive to meet those sales tax targets in, in terms of a rebate. So you meet that target, we provide a rebate for X amount of time to really incentivize that entity to come in and set up shop and spend the money, make the capital investment. And then we benefit after those incentives are sunsetted. Good example, and one of the reasons that we went to do that is we felt like we had a window to get a supermarket into the Three Springs area. Then the merger of Albertson's and Kroger's was on the table. Now it's not off the table, but the economic environment is a little bit different. I think it's all timing and we need to continue to look for opportunities where we can spur local. And, and it is, there's a clause in there or a filter in there, I should say, that really looks for local participation. We don't want to provide economic incentives for franchises or, or other entities to come in here and provide something that we can't try to do with our, with our local community.
And that's your role or that's Economic Development Alliance's role to look for those opportunities?
It's, it's definitely our role, but we should be partnering with entities like the Alliance who, you know, have their, that's what they do for a living. But yes, that's, we have a person dedicated to economic prosperity and he does a great job. He's, he's been very focused on, on grants and, and, and providing support to the business community. What we need to do now is look for very targeted opportunities and then try to go form those partnerships.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Okay, so since we stopped any talk about development out there. Now, my question is, is there any way to downsize that and move forward without the Southern U tribe? Like, cause we don't extend to their exterior boundaries? Or do they have ownership along that corridor somewhere?
Yeah. What's interesting about that is in order to stop that project, they changed state law.
Right, but if we don't impinge upon their boundaries.
That's correct. But most of La Posta is in their historical boundaries. So they don't technically own the property. Again, this is what people don't understand. They, they sold that property 75 years ago. They don't technically own any of that property anymore. Those are private landowners. But the legislation that they passed is anything that was in their historical boundaries, they have to provide approval for annexation within those historical boundaries.
All right. So what about, cause I remember a long time ago, the development proposal was much smaller. Is there any way to go much smaller on land that we have?
That boundary is like right up, like right past that bridge.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like, it wouldn't be worth it if we couldn't go. All the way, maybe, but it's, it's like real close.
Yeah, they, all the develop, the, the developable property for light industrial is squarely in that historical boundary owned by two or three private landowners. And it's, it's well over 80, I think it's close to 80 acres that we're talking about.
I have a question. Cause I, I would have a feeling that potentially once Three Springs Phase Two is going, that their appetite to let, to talk about annexation again would open up. Like once that is, and so, which I think both projects are important. And so my thought has always been like, where are we with that? Did the water thing get figured out? No, still not there. So we're still.
It's, it's not so much water. It's, um, there's, there's some infrastructure that needs to happen to, to be able to get to Phase Two.
Did we get the grant? No.
No, we did not get the grant. And that ticket to do it correctly all the way through is about $10 million. To, to do it at a minimal is $4 million. It's going to have to be built if a school is going to be put in place, which was a promise and a guarantee by the 9R in the bond. So they're looking at figuring out how they're going to have to, to provide that road improvement up to that school.
And is there any availability for a partnership with the city? Or is there a way to, like, I don't, not saying we pay for everything, that's not what I'm saying. But is there, I mean, I know we were talking about like changing some land use development codes to help them pencil out some things a little bit better. Is there opportunity for more grants that we could go after for that?
I mean, I think there's always an opportunity for grants on that portion. We do have the development agreement revised. It was going to come to council, if you recall, right about the time the La Posta collapse kind of happened. We placed a pause on it. We're rebuilding those relationships with the Southern U. And the last after our dinner, I think that was what, like February, March in that timeframe? The commitment we made to them was the understanding that as these agendas were being made, it was city-driven, that the next agenda would be driven by them.
Yeah.
Because we heard loud and clear that we need to get their opinions of what they believe is important. And so Kyle's actually working with them, has reached out a few times to try to coordinate a date as we promised in June or July, that they can meet with the new council and then provide us some agenda items and discuss. So until they, or the tribal council, I think, has let us know that they would like to move forward with the development agreement. I'm very cautious to try to move forward without that and then, then not being aligned with that moving forward. So that's the development agreement that helps that portion develop and grow. What Mike is talking about is really the big crux of it is the $10 million road.
Yeah.
We don't have the funding for it. It doesn't pencil out for Southern U to do it. The school district, they went and they secured that in their bond and they had no realization, I think, of how much that road actually costs. So they're kind of stuck in this ability of like, okay, well, who's going to build the road? They asked if the city was going to do it. I said, it's not in our plans. They asked the Southern U and they were like, yeah, no, we're not going to. Possibly with now us having Southern U, City and 9R, that may open us up for more transportation funding or something on that side. But I also think that we are realizing the complexities now that comes with federal funding. And how that is going is not at any kind of a speed at this point. So I do think it's going to be a, a hurdle for, for a few years still to come.
Any other questions for Mike? Go ahead.
Okay, so, and this is kind of on the topic, but, okay, so our development options are very limited. And we're reliant upon lodgers tax and sales tax. So long-term, what is the possibility of maybe raising up our lodgers or sales tax for the city separate from the county? Can we do that or does it have to go with the county?
I mean, yeah, I think on lodgers tax, that's always a possibility for the council to decide on where you want to look at it. I don't have exactly where we compare with other communities with the lodgers tax rate. I do think, if I can recall correctly, there would be some room to increase lodgers tax without us being way out in front of everyone else. The sales tax gets a little bit trickier as we've kind of talked a little bit about any kind of increase on there does potentially put us on the higher end of communities, our size of sales tax. So we don't have, I think, as much wiggle room from a public persona or, or view of it. I would tell you that, you know, we're, we're having the county go out in November for a sales tax. You're going to have DFPD as they're looking to do a property tax increase. Those are going to present challenges. All of those are not anything that I'd say like we, you shouldn't do it if you all feel that we should. But that's, that's, those are challenges of tax increases that are going out to the public. But is there a capacity to do it? Yes, if you wanted to, but each of them comes with a, a con that might be associated with that. The other part to it is there are still two areas that we still need to find sustainable funding for. Transit, which is one that we definitely need. We were able to kick the can a couple of years down the road because we sold the parking lot for $4 million. So that's a fund balance that transit can kind of use for a bit. And then Mike touched on it a bit is housing. That's also another area in which we could use funding for. I know childcare is something that we're going to be discussing a little bit later. So that's another gap of these initiatives that we actually don't have funding reliably sourced into. So I think if you look at it all holistically, there's definitely going to be some discussions in regards to that. And then the last part of that in regards to like taxes and everything else is we have a fire contract that you know that ends in 2028. And decisions need to be made in regards to, do we end up joining in the Durango Fire Protection District? If that does, there's ability to maybe redirect some property tax funding that was going there to sustain some of these services. But financially, there's some decisions that'll be coming to this council here of kind of how do we begin figuring these topics out?
Any, have any questions? Cause I have one last question. Okay, so on the posta road development, it's no longer there. Okay, so if the Southern U decides to develop there, do they need ROK or they just can do it? What's the relationship there?
No, on, we, we don't have, we don't, it's not within the city boundary or within the city limits. The posta currently is not within the city limits.
Okay.
So they would go through the county process, I believe. And it'd be between Southern U and county and how that would work out.
So one, one of the challenges with, with lodgers tax is we could increase, today we're at five and a quarter, we could probably increase it and still be within, as Jose said, within a range of light communities. I think the, we could probably get to six and a half is my guess, but there'd probably need to be a study, which I'm happy to do and come back and say, this is what lodgers tax looks like in other, other areas and, and when they've increased and, and such. As Jose alluded to, the challenge is timing. And the counties sort of put us in a, in a, a little bit of a, of a, of a difficult position in allocating their existing lodgers tax. Only 30% of it is going to tourism marketing. And of that 30%, that may not even come to, to this effort. Right? So with them allocating 70% to community needs, that was about a 20, I don't know, 27% decrease in the budget. And then if they move another $300,000 out, that would, that would be another 12%. So, you know, we're, we're whittling down the available spend on us being able to market and generate lodgers tax considerably. I, I think from what I heard from Commissioner Salca a couple of days ago is they, they are likely not going to ballot in November on the lodgers tax increase. They're going to position that for the following year. And they will go from two to six on the ballot, which I think will pass. And then the likelihood of them increasing anything to tourism marketing is, is, is probably very low. They are required at a minimum to do 10%, which would, would be a push to what their 30% is today. Right? So if they went from two to six and said 10% lodgers tax, it equals the exact same money that they're spending today. And we just have to figure out how we collaborate with them and see if we can't participate in any way, shape or form for those monies. To me, it's, it's yes, that 300K or 290 or whatever is, it'd be nice to put into our budget. But the partnership is, is probably more important so that we're not having two brands, two, two initiatives and two, it just would be, I'm not exactly sure how that's going to work. Right?
Okay, so long-term funding for the city of Durango, since we're nearing, well, we're at capacity since we can't expand too many places. Maybe we should seriously think about raising our lodgers tax on this next ballot, you know, before we get snuffed out of the the taxing game.
I would just caution, like be careful with that. I think the narrative that we, that we create with Mike running the prosperity division and like, What we're doing was it barely passed the first time it came out. Um, and there's been a lot of pushback since I've been on council about it. Um, you know, and it's it's twofold, it's the hotel community and the tourism community saying we need to spend more and then it is residents saying we need to. Spend less, um, I think Dave got gets a lot out of it um just from the industry he's in. Um, and then affordability, lodger's tax is different because it's mostly tourists paying that. Um, but just if there's multiple taxes, DFPD county going out at one election, us throwing another one in there could be detrimental to all of it. Um, and so I'm not thinking we shouldn't at some point potentially do that and, you know, I I support doing that. With more money, especially going to transit because that does need to become whole, um, but. Um, I don't know if right now.
Yeah, you know, that that tho- those are good thoughts, but usually like when I go to the ballot. And I don't wanna vote for any tax increases, I usually would vote for the least amount of tax increase, so if we put in a small increase. Before the market's not there anymore and everybody else puts in their um. Their offer to gain more money, maybe we shouldn't um. We should forget that, you know, people still want to make sure that the city of Durango provides for the future. Cause I can see us hitting the wall here on bringing in income if we don't have anywhere to to develop.
We're gonna go to Councilor Woodruff.
Uh, I I absolutely hear what you're saying, Mayor, um, I would just be reticent right now with. An increase in lodger's tax revenue because right now with the split of fifty five, twenty, fourteen, eleven. Um, what we don't know is that, you know, the former tourism uh visit Durango department. They just took all the money and then gave us very few receipts to show what they had spent that money on, so right now there's, to me, there's a big unknown of. How much money do we actually need to spend on tourism to maintain at the very least the level of services that they were providing, if not more and better, so. Do I think Mike's work over the next, you know, however many year or two to figure out what is a a. An actual budget that we need for tourism, how much money do we need to spend? Do we need to spend all fifty five percent of it? Man, let's make sure that we maintain those services and and maintain the level of um services for for tourism. But if it only takes sixty five percent of that, now we can start having those conversations of how can we potentially parse out money for for transit? How do we parse out money for housing? Um, if that's what the voters' will is, because the voters have already spoken, we have to spend that money appropriately. So I'm looking forward to seeing how the tourism, you know, prosperity office looks at tourism. Maintaining the level of services and then do we need that full fifty five percent or do we need more? I think that's just the, I think we all need to kind of wait and see in my opinion of how the next year or two pans out.
Any other questions, comments, uh, information needed? On tourism? Okay, um, we'll take a five minute, it's it's eleven twelve right now, we'll take a five minute break and we'll come back at eleven seventeen and we're gonna talk about. Uh, infrastructure on Main Avenue. Um, and so we'll we'll start in on that next, we're gonna be walking through. Is that what I say in the topic right, I gotta make sure, if I'm looking at my phone, by the way, I am looking at the. Agenda for today, not not uh posting on Instagram. Infrastructure rebuild along Main Avenue, okay?
Uh, the possible library district was much.
Five minutes, so. Eleven thirteen now, we'll come back at eleven eighteen.
Yeah.
Okay, we're gonna show the five minute timer up.
Yes.
We're here for that.
Yeah.
Uh, so that's why this dressing up.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry. I just know I'm trying to guess who you told me your thing.
Oh, yeah.
My chairs. They can try to. I'm actually. Oh, yeah. Yeah. So the guy just.
Yeah. I was like, yeah, you're fine.
Um, I might have a little. But yeah.
Okay. Don't worry.
Brett, come speak about. Main Avenue infrastructure. So if you could take your seats. That would be wonderful. So Brett's gonna talk for about fifteen minutes about. What's going on on Main Avenue and then we will open it up for questions. Uh, we have lunch that's supposed to start at noon, but we're gonna be doing a working lunch. So I'll give you guys a break. We'll decide based on Brett's. Presentation and the questions that follow if we need to stop kind of in the in the middle of what we're talking about. Grab lunch and then start again, or if we can wrap the topic up and grab lunch and then start the next topic. So we'll kind of play by ear with this. Um, and with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Brett. I'll give you the ten minutes. I'll go off back here when you're at ten, just so you know. Uh, where we are at ten minutes. Thanks, Brett.
Oh, morning, Madam Mayor, Council. Uh, my name is Brett Hotting. I'm the new Public Works Director. I've been here on this week eleven. So I actually, I've been familiar with downtown districts in my past careers. Um, and it's, you know, interesting that we're, you know, talking about this today. I actually have a couple of my Public Works staff members, uh, James Law and Evan Tyler, to handle any of the more detailed technical questions since they've got history than maybe I don't necessarily have. So, um, one thing I don't have with me is visual aids like sewer pipes, wrong water lines like you usually see with Laura. But, uh, we'll try to get through this presentation. So, um, the first slide I'm gonna show you is. This is just for informational purposes, but this is a slide that kind of details our citywide infrastructure replacement cost. Our inventory and kind of what we was gonna be looking at over the next several years. Uh, the annual reinvestment cost, if you take a look at a two percent, uh, spend over this fifty years, it's gonna be about a little over sixteen million dollars. So we definitely like most other communities, we're gonna have some infrastructure replacement needs, but this was just for reference for the future. So you kind of know what we're dealing with with what we have with the ground. We start talking about the Main Avenue, the Main Avenue Utilities. Um, the water sewer and stormwater infrastructure under Main Avenue is well past its useful service life of approximately fifty years. So I guess, you know, it's it's kind of in that critical need to start the process of replacement. It's not really a question of if we want to do it, it's really more like when and how is gonna be it. So we'll first talk about water, then we'll talk about sewer, then we'll talk about stormwater. So the entire length of Main Avenue from Fifth to Fourteenth is cast iron water pipe. It was installed pre nineteen sixty, so it's at least sixty-five years old. And pictures of the pipe from a recent excavation reveal pity and corrosion on the pipe. So it is not bedded in proper bedding material, meaning it is surrounded by lomi clay that traps moisture around the pipe. Uh, the soils in Durango are called hot soils because they're notoriously corrosive to metal pipe. The picture on the left is the water line under Main Avenue taken in two thousand twenty-four when a hot tap was installed for a four-inch fire service line for a business. A hot tap means that the crew has to go in and install it while the pipe is under pressure. So it took a specialized crew from outside Durango to do this. One of the other challenges we have is isolating single blocks of water is made impossible down here by old failing valves. Uh, this means that when a repair is made, the water outages are larger than necessary, also causing water quality issues for businesses. Many of the fire hydrants down in the district are pre nineteen seventy-four and are no longer serviceable, needing replacement. Meaning some of them are still able to use, but we can't get parts for them anymore. Um, the hydrant shown here is from nineteen fifty-three and has a knot in service collar around the nozzle. So many of the water services lines along Main Avenue also are daisy chained. And so you kick, they're not separated. So when something has to happen, it's it affects multiple businesses. Um, we also have some old galvanized, uh, in iron and steel pipe that may have lead goose necks or pigtails in the first one to two feet. Those also have to be replaced as well. When we talk about sanitary sewer lines along Main Avenue, um, their clay pipe, they were installed around the same time as the water, pre nineteen sixty. So many have holes, service lines that protrude into the pipe, making them very difficult to jet rod or clean with pressure and also camera. So many of the sanitary sewer manholes are cracked and bandaged together with repair clamps or grout. One manhole by Buckley is made of brick and is held up by brick pillars. Uh, any cracks in the sewer line or manholes, uh, allows infiltration into the system, which then that it goes into our collection system, bringing in debris, sediment, and can clog the system. And the increased infiltration also creates treatments at our wastewater treatment plant because the influence surges and dilutes the wastewater and making it a much more difficult process. And then along, although, you know, restaurants in the downtown district have grease interceptors and containers, the city has constant issues with grease entering the sewer system downtown. Um, some of this grease clogs the sewer system and creates sanitary sewer overflows, uh, which are a violation of the State Health Department as well. So one of the things too, it's not only regulatory, but it can create some public and environmental health issues too. You should note that before any camera work is performed on sanitary sewers, typically you have to jet rod them or clean them to ensure that the camera could travel down the pipe. The picture on the left shows the pipe. Excuse me. Picture on the left shows the pipe after cleaning, but there was debris caught where the pipe was broken. So it also kind of, you know, shows you that this putt, whoops, this pride, you know, sanitary sewer is broken. And but basically that sanitary sewage is just kind of infiltrating into the adjacent soils. Um. So you can see that the pipe is cracked at the bell and it's just, it really is creating some significant issues. Stormwater utilities too, we have clay pipe in that Fifth to Fourteenth. We get debris coming in through the cracks and grease spills. We get some of that from even storm sewer runoff from grease and grease, uh, containers from alleys and things like that, which actually clogs our storm sewer system too, as the grease turns into a sediment that's easy to be cleaned. So we talk about deferred maintenance. Deferred maintenance has been something that's been very prevalent by a lot of agencies in the past. The thing with underground infrastructure, it's it's kind of like out of sight, out of mind. So we're not in a, we're not in a unique position here, but, um, the deferred maintenance has led to some issues. Try to find my slot sheet here. So, you know, due to the, due to the years of deferred maintenance, um, whether it be preventive maintenance, whether it be replacements, repairs, whatever, on Main Avenue. We're right now only essentially, we're only essentially doing reactionary maintenance, not anything really preventative. Um, so basically we're waiting for something to break and fix it when it does. Because the water lines weren't flushed on a routine basis for years, any disturbances in the water mains downtown lead to huge water quality issues. So what would happen if we start flushing now? Would it get better? Unfortunately not. Uh, we're at the point where the water isolation valves on Main no longer seal or seat. So we can't isolate block to block, block to block properly. To actually flush those. And it would create such disturbances at businesses, especially restaurants, uh, would need to close for a few days until the water cleaned up. Additionally, you have an increase in the velocity of water in the pipes when you do that. And it creates a situation where you create pressure waves. And then the velocity of the water, um, creates small pinhole leaks that become big holes, small cracks become big cracks, et cetera. So basically the old pipes fail easily when there's changes in flow. Pressure or slight ground movement due to any breeze and thaw. Cast iron was primarily used in the nineteen hundreds for water lines with replacement ductile iron. And then today they're they're starting to use more of a phased in plastic pipe that for water lines. Okay. We talk about the cost timeline and public outreach. Basically, we've got a lot of work to do here. Since all of that underground infrastructure needs to be replaced, you know, it's not something that's visible to the public. It's all underground and like I said, it's been out of sight, out of mind. But we're looking at a, you know, significant amount of of, uh, work that needs to be done on the downtown district. You know, as far as part as costs go, it's gonna be impossible at this time, you know, to determine realistic costs for the utility replacements along Main Avenue. Only two blocks have been designed for water and sewer replacement, but didn't involve potholing or ground penetrating radar, which are kind of new industry technology that comes out. To confirm underground utility locations or design conflicts like coal shafts or boulders and things like that. If you saw an opportunity, what a boulder looks like in the middle of our road yesterday that we dug out. So each block of Main Avenue differs in in needs as well. Uh, some blocks have full-length stormwater piping, um, inlets and manholes, others only have partials. Um, some blocks have daisy chain water lines like we were talking about, some do not. The remaining blocks on Main Avenue are expected to be designed in the next year, but that's gonna depend on the funding and the budget. So when we reach final design review, we receive an engineer's estimate of probable cost. Um, unfortunately, over the past several years, we've seen the engineers estimates being about forty percent lower than the actual costs that come in for repairs. So we need to be working on that. At this point, we can't determine really how how long or estimate how long each block will take to construct because there's gonna be different levels of complexity. This will become more clear upon design completion when the underground conflicts are determined and we can figure that out. And our goal at this time would be to reconstruct one block at a time. That's gonna be once again dependent on budget and then the impacts of the downtown. I know we've had some discussions on which end could we could start, it really won't matter just how we sequence getting that repair done. One of the things I'll point out is Sarah was at a conference recently in Loveland and took some pictures of them redoing their downtown. And it doesn't have to look like a war zone. We'll be able to network with other communities that have been through this and learn from some of what they've experienced. So, um, you know, as far as operate order of operations, we've seen, we've received a lot of questions asking if utilities need to be done first. Um, the answer is yes. The you need to start from the bottom up. And so underground utilities, the water sewer storm must be completed first. Then we can build up the road subgrade, do the curb gutter, traffic calming features, signing, and all the other things that would go along with the downtown rebuild district like this. So getting this information out to the public, you know, prior to any construction, uh, was gonna take us education and outreach efforts. Uh, we need to educate and explain the need to replace, you know, our aging structure and the consequences of basically deferring this any further than we need to. Um, I kind of look at it like this, I mean, the downtown is kind of the heart of our community. That could be subjective, but, you know, we're not at a point where we're gonna be able to put in stents or bypasses. We're gonna have to do open heart surgery. And I just want to stress again, you know, we were at a growing water smart conference a couple of weeks ago, a team of us. This is not unique and it's not unique in our industry. Out of sight, out of mind, the infrastructure, um, has been pretty prevalent in almost every county. With the technologies that have come forward with tamarang and all the different, we now are being much more aware of what's actually under there and not able to just turn our head and say, well, we'll get by till next year. So. Anyway, that's just kind of a quick synopsis of what we have going on downtown. And so.
Thank you, Brett. Questions? Go ahead, Council.
Brett, I'm curious, so. Why wasn't the radar, uh, underground finding out when boulders and coal shoots presented in the first request or proposals? Do you know why? I know you haven't been here that long, but.
No, I don't know why, but.
Yeah.
To be honest, there's a lot of mystery as to why a lot of things were included in the first request. I can tell you specifically with ground penetrated radar, um, a lot of the issue is its accuracy involving the clay and soil types in Durango. Uh, the way ground penetrating radar works is it looks for voids. So it's it's most useful with very large pipe. Um, and then again, with the clay, it it's not as accurate. However, we're, the ground penetrating radar we've been discussing, and and this is a much larger unit than the standard. It's kind of like a lawnmower, you walk behind it and those aren't as powerful. Uh, we're working with a specialist to explore the possibility of a tow behind unit that's, uh, goes behind a car and and would be pulled down the street and hopefully provide some more accuracy.
Councilor Gonzalez?
Um, so let me. Okay, so the the question. How, we know that this has been going for quite some time, like this issue of redoing Main Street. Do we know how long? I mean, has it been ten years? Has it been twenty? How long has there been this discussion of the issue in Main Street?
The in terms of the utilities piece, I don't know. Yeah, we had talked about, um, kind of the surface level multimodal improvements that's been on, uh, as an identified project for fifteen years now. But in terms of the utilities, I don't know how long.
So I, and I guess just the reason I'm asking, you know, because, I mean, the projects just get more and more expensive, right, to to do. And so I I've been, it's a more of a general question is that it seems like from the time, from the time a project is identified as needed. Too much time goes by before there's any action taken. And even still, we don't have a cost. So how can we go to our community and say this is necessary when we don't have a cost? Um, it's sort of rhetorical, but I guess my my, is is the reason why there's such a delay from identification to implementation, funding?
All I can tell you is from the information that I've gleaned, it's been several years that the maintenance has been deferred. And unfortunately, there really aren't any staff members, you know, in Public Works that we're, you know, we're we're in charge of making those decisions at that point. So, but it's been going off, the deferred maintenance has been going on for several years, mainly because of the disruption of the downtown businesses.
So I mean, I I I think it would be important to sort of identify, like, why it's taking so long. And then I I'll have, I have some other questions, but, uh, sure. Anyone else have a question? Go ahead.
Yes, but real quick too on that, it's funny, I went and, um, I was running the stairs with Christina Runderly this morning and I actually asked about this project and was and was like, you know, why? Why has infrastructure never, like, why didn't it go through? And her response to me was at that point in time when she was on council, which was fifteen, I mean, ten years ago, something a long time ago, um, that this wasn't the priority.
Okay.
Um, and that, like, there was other projects and this wasn't the priority. It wasn't their priority from the Infrastructure Advisory Board. It wasn't the priority for council. There was other things that they wanted to focus and spend money on was her answer to me for that. Um, I have a question. When you're, let's just say just infrastructure, that's all we're focusing on right now. Um, I believe there needs to be more, but let's just say that how much into the curb and gutter will you have to like remove and cut in order to replace? And I know it's probably different, you don't know because you don't know where the pipes are and stuff, but like.
On. We have a pretty solid idea where the pipes are. I can speak to that a little bit, that it does. Working in tandem with the multimodal aspect of it changes where the the curb line is gonna be depending on sidewalk width.
Yeah.
And those are things that we need to be working through and designing now. And that's kind of why the utilities, although it needs to be installed first, it needs to be designed after, because from a maintenance perspective, you want your utilities under the road surface, not under the concrete sidewalks. And so the decision for how wide and which blocks are we're gonna have wider sidewalks kind of affects the design for the water line, the sewer line.
Let's pretend we said, Sarah, we're not doing the multimodal thing we want, don't want to do that. Let's pretend, like, I'm not, I do not support that. But let's pretend to be safe for the record, but let's just pretend that's what we're saying. If you were gonna go in and we're like, we have to do the infrastructure, that's what we want to focus on, that's what we're going for. And you were to tear up, tear it up, would you touch the sidewalks while you're tearing up the infrastructure?
We're gonna have to because service lines that connect from the main go through under the sidewalk to the businesses.
And would you have to touch an inch or six inches or the foot, the whole thing?
Most probably the whole thing realistically, because, um, as you mentioned, a lot of the service lines that were put in are pigtailed off of each other. Our city code requires each building to have its own service line with its own meter. And that's something that we would want to do as we're touching this infrastructure. We would want to bring everything up to our modern code. So yes, we're gonna have to basically replace service lines into each building as we go along.
So we're tearing up the sidewalks in front of every business on Main Street, regardless if we're doing any next step improvement. Thank you.
I'm gonna ask Sarah to show the slide about the multi multimodal so that everybody under.
Sorry. Follow up question, I'm just gonna stick my nose into this one, just a quick follow up question. The I was under the impression that the that we've got a mandate, federal mandate by twenty thirty-seven to remove all lead that's within the the water lines. Yes, um, within a two foot, within two foot from the the main. Um, and so the direction from the state has actually changed recently. We were, the previous vocabulary basically suggested we needed to replace every single line that has any lead pigtail. Okay. Um, they now state that if it's longer than two feet. In our excavation, it's very rarely more than two feet. Um, the ones that we have found are normally just about a foot. So those would not be required by the state. Can I just ask, it's, it may not be required by the state, is it still a great idea to leave a foot of lead on water lines? If we find lead, we replace it. Okay. No questions asked, it's not. If you're replacing lead, probably if we ever tore up the street, which is gonna tear up the sidewalk, which is gonna enable us to replace and handle that as well. Yes, and it's not necessarily the full service line is made of lead. Um, it's just the pigtail, it's the ceiling aspect of it. And so again, that's why it's typically less than two feet. Thank you.
It's a great question, though, at least we're not mandated by law now to do everything in the community that way so that we'll get to do it on however we schedule it, so.
Thank you. Uh, I'm gonna have Sarah just explain this slide so that that's a full picture of everything that we're talking about and then we'll go back to questions.
Yeah, Jose asked just for a really quick update on where we are for the multimodal piece of it, and this is utilities excluded. And if you remember, we were at the thirty percent level design for the seven hundred and eight hundred block last year. We have brought the whole corridor up to match that level. So we have thirty percent design level, uh, plans from Fifth Street to Fourteenth Street along Main. And the thirty percent design really is just plotting out the design and includes some, uh, utilities surveying for locations and right of ways. So we have a good engineering idea of the direction where we're going, but there's still a lot of flexibility and room for tweaks to the design. We have incorporated the community feedback that we heard for the seven hundred and eight hundred blocks into this thirty percent level of design. And the big ones are that the center turn lane, uh, was, uh, increased by, uh, one foot, borrowing, uh, sick or borrowing five inches from each. Hang on, getting my math wrong. Borrowing six inches from each travel lane to create a foot in the travel lane. Um, but we're not touching the width of the travel way. So from fog line to fog line, it's still thirty-two and a half inches. I just adjusted that center turn lane based on some of the concerns that we heard about safety for delivery drivers and, um, storing snow and things like that. Uh, sidewalk width will be expanded up to three and a half feet in this proposal. Curb extensions and locations were shortened in order to accommodate some more parking spaces. And then, uh, we increased the number of loading zones based on requests from businesses in the proposal. So we do have, uh, upcoming meetings for design input. We've worked really closely with community engagement, um, to be very strategic about our outreach for this phase. We have business owner specific meeting coming up on June fourth. Uh, specific meeting for downtown employees and breaking news, the location for this one is gonna be Eleventh Street Station. Uh, we have a general public meeting on June sixteenth and then a meeting with, uh, accessibility focus on the twenty-third. And, uh, looking forward to that process, we are anticipating ninety percent design and a cost estimate, uh, by the end of this year. Sarah, if I, if I may, we also have a survey going out to tourists to visit the area. And you'll see elements of the pilot project have been installed. We're waiting on a few items still. I think the west side of Eighth Street still needs to be installed, which we're, um, coordinating with Streets Restriping on that one. We have a call to artists out, they're gonna, uh, submit proposals to paint within the curb extensions that are currently painted red. But that's an opportunity to have, um, some local artwork in town. And then, um, yeah, so the pellets and curb extensions were installed at the bottom of the go.
Go ahead, Council.
Okay, well, thank you for that update. I have two questions here. Okay, so. And I'll give a little background. Of course, I ran against downtown next steps because I thought there was major issues with just doing a cosmetic design and not including utilities. So right now, you're telling me that there's been no. Estimation, design, or any kind of drawings for underground utilities at this point, at thirty percent. And then that's one question. The next question is, I thought we'd put a hold on this project at the thirty percent design level until we started construction on the nine R building. Then that was on hold.
So my, uh, my motion, which was approved by council, was to not talk about construction costs and that we will finish the design as we have the grants already approved for them. So the grant money that we received will be spent and will get us up to the ninety percent design, but no construction discussion would be talked about. That was my motion that was approved by council.
Well, it just seems that at each presentation of downtown next steps, all the, um, details constantly change. And that's my perception, and that's a lot of perception of people. But since you explained that. What is included and does not include utilities?
So the, I I definitely understand the confusion. The resolution language is a little bit confusing. It did direct staff to complete the design and get a cost estimate and install the pilot project and then full stop, like no conversation about construction funding, no prioritizing for anything beyond that. And and no additional design funding for for the multimodal piece of it. Um, so we are still operating within that. We are just trying to get to a full design and cost estimate for council's review. And then the multimodal sidewalk surface piece, like above ground, is separate from the utilities team. So I'll let, I'll let, um, James and Evan take over, uh, answering that question. We are working together, uh, in tandem, but they're separate projects.
Yes, so currently utilities design, we have a ninety percent design for two blocks. Uh, the remaining seven blocks are sitting at about a thirty percent design. They work a little differently than multimodal, like for, uh, utilities, a thirty percent design is basically just a horizontal alignment. And subsurface investigation, uh, you go to a vertical alignment as you move forward. And that's where we're sitting now. We are, also, we're directed to get the design up to a hundred percent. That way we can get an engineer's estimate, um, and give a number for what the work's gonna cost.
But to clarify too, construction for you will go first, construction second, but design has to be her first and then you, so you can align with where the road is, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And I was working with the same, working with the same design firm, they do specialize in both. So they're, they're building these designs in tandem relative to.
They can't do the design of utilities until the design of next steps or whatever is done.
And we've kind of reached that point with multimodal pre, pre, before we were there. Um, they have decided where the curb line is gonna be, so we can move forward with.
Okay, so you're gonna move forward with just two blocks and the rest of the blocks aren't gonna be included?
No, the two blocks are already done.
Okay.
So we're missing.
When are the remainder of the blocks gonna be included in this plan?
We are trying to move forward with that design after mid-year.
Go ahead. Uh, actually, let go, we'll go to you and then we'll go to.
Okay, so, um, so while you are, while we are doing the road construction sewer and water, can we also bury power lines?
It is not in our scope for design, but it's not.
The alleys.
It's in the alleys.
If you're picking up the wrong question.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, what what else can you put under there? Get it out.
Is it, um, so that's not a, yeah, um, not on the table?
It would not be. Yeah, we have been part of it. There is fiber optic as part of the design going.
That was, that was kind of dovetailing in what my question was gonna be is like, what other vendors are out there that we could have them aligned with this process to be a part of this? So we're doing this. So we're doing this once and we're not trying to piecemeal this after.
I mean, that is ultimately the goal is to get it, get it done, get out and be done for the next 50 years.
Right, so.
But I will say, every 50 years, you're in a similar position, infrastructure agents.
We have already been coordinating with fiber. I know we've all seen there's a lot of fiber building in downtown, so that's been a discussion. Power has not been a part of the discussion, but certainly something that can be included.
What about gas? I mean, is is are we aligned with Atmos or anybody else that if they need to do some aging infrastructure improvements?
Gas is also in the alleyways.
It is. Okay.
So the gas, electric, and uh fiber currently is in the alleys?
There is currently not a lot of fiber in that area, but we would be coordinating with the fiber to get into all those businesses.
And the utility is, how does that, I guess, how does that funding come through? So if we decided that that should be included, is that a separate discussion with a separate entity or is that something we can decide?
Utilities is not fun fiber. Typically, the fiber companies pay to install it and recoup their money by selling it as a product.
Utilities, you're talking like a gas and electric?
Yeah.
It would be with a separate entity. Uh, normally, if they don't have any plans, so if it's in the alley and they have no plans in moving it, they will be doing it. But they're going to say the city needs to pick up that cost.
I just, I want to just ask process. So we've got a lot of ideas that are potentially a part of this. I'm not sure how we're mulling those ideas over and having the staff available so that they can provide their feedback on some of the ideas. Or at least that's where I stand as a council.
To the future of the discussion.
Yeah, the the future of the discussion is kind of, it's really twofold. Uh, when it goes to this project on the multimodal side, uh, following the resolution that was approved by council, as soon as we're done with design, we're stopping. Uh, it would then take a council member to bring it up to say, I want to bring this discussion up and talk construction and go down that road. The utilities one's going to be a little bit different. Uh, as they get their estimate and know what it is, we would have to bring it back to council because whether the multimodal project goes forward or not, we still need to address that aging infrastructure. And so I think a lot of these questions or or ideas, uh, we would need to really have kind of where utilities gets out specifically to that 90% design for that entire main avenue, then we would be in a better position to actually have more detailed discussions of what can go in there, what is there, what have we found that's different? Here's the price tag. So it's a good discussion to have right now, but we're still in the exploratory area that answering questions or coming up with ideas, you're going to get a lot of, we'll have to get back with you. We'll have to see what design is. We're just not there to have that knowledge.
Okay. And and what would the format of this interaction, did we have five more minutes to talk on this topic or?
No, we actually have 20 more minutes if you want to keep digging on this topic right now. At 12:15, we're going to break, um, get lunch or earlier if we if we stop earlier. And then at 12:45, there's, we're going to continue to work. And then at about 12:40, I'm going to um excuse you. You guys are going to be excused to go take a photo and then you'll come back and we'll start, continue on with that right at 10:00. Is that what you need?
Just for me, I still have two or three questions for the group up there. I don't know what else, anybody else?
If they are all related, I'd like you to ask them all, I mean, just keep asking. And then um we'll go to Councilor Gonzalez, uh, because she also has some questions. And then Councilor Wood has questions. So why don't you start and then we'll go to Gonzalez?
Quick, the the hot tapping, um, there was cost to mobilize that team because we weren't familiar with the technology. There is the technology. Do you consider it just really a Band-Aid um until we refix infrastructure? Or is it an option that we could buy our own hot tapping equipment and delay this project because we've got the ability to do that? Does that make sense? I'm fishing here, so.
The hot tapping is really just an isolated, you know, repair to, so really the rest of the water main is still compromised. So it was, you know, it it's just a Band-Aid.
Okay, it's a Band-Aid piece of equipment and not a cheap one, I would imagine. Okay. Um, the, uh, no, we talked about the national requirements, um, isolating the grease issues. One of the things I guess I didn't quite hear enough of is if, when the infrastructure is updated, what does that allow us to do better five years after that's been upgraded? And what are the business benefits that are going to see from that? I can, off the top of my head, I can say, you know, now if we have one restaurant have a water problem, we can isolate that one restaurant and we can take care of that water problem. But when you were talking about grease and and other issues, do you see significant impact on maintenance in the long term as well as how we're dealing with those issues two years or three years after the upgrades?
So with greasy, that's specifically referring to the stormwater system, the stormwater collection system. And that's, you know, grease, literally just your car, what it's dripping on the ground, this, that, and the other. So as part of a really more multimodal side of things is a lot of those improvements we're going to be installing or proposing to install. Uh, water quality improvements. So that's um, uh, natural features that help collect some of that water and clean said water. So that's a a big part of the improvements as well as just uh installation for uh more stormwater inlets to improve stormwater conveyance throughout the downtown area. There is not a large amount of infrastructure downtown currently to convey stormwater. So we do have the issue of the aging infrastructure and unfortunately, there isn't a lot we can do to just eliminate the grease because it's it's part of um
Operations.
Operations in life as we know it.
Yeah, okay. And and water quality would improve for the businesses, obviously?
As far as, yes, drinking water, correct.
And the flushing that we have to do as a good steward of a water line, um, that becomes far less of a problem on a new.
That would be, we would do that on a regular basis. We would get away from having these.
Would the businesses be shut down for a couple of days? No, because everything's new? And okay, great. Thank you.
If I could say that one more, I mean, I think your biggest portion of it is we're on, it depends, right? We could have, your business could be out tomorrow because some, one of the lines failed and your business is done. The biggest part about this is it extends the life. You have new, it's like buying a new car and you're able to plan around it. So you know, we're coming at this point at this time to redo uh the water line, your business, so your business can make those appropriation times to say, okay, I know my business might be uh down on it. Right now, you're, it's kind of pick a card. It may fail tomorrow. And if you had a big party planned, and I know Dave, you're in the restaurant business and you had a huge corporate event coming in with 100 people, you're stuck. Whereas if you know when it's coming, you're able to plan around it and then have, you know, more of a confidence level of nothing, that everything's going to happen. But you have more of a confidence level about 20 years really without having to worry about anything crazy happening.
Yeah, and I can list some other processes there, I think, about that project.
A couple of other things that I'll, I would talk about the daisy chaining when we have the new infrastructure, we'll be able to isolate it and minimize the impact to more businesses. The other thing that we know, we've been working on getting a little more aggressive is the fog program, the grease line, doing inspections, making sure that everybody's taking care of their. So that's another issue besides the infrastructure that we're working on currently to try to minimize grease going into the system.
Sorry, would it also allow you to isolate which restaurant was responsible for the grease that was ending up causing the problem? So we've got an improvement and enforcement and elimination of the laws?
Yes.
Got you. So you can do that now.
Councilor Gonzalez.
Uh, so just, this is a more general infrastructure question. Um, so I was up, I think we were all at the event last night about projects, um, creative projects. So how is it determined that a project is done? So Eighth and Eighth, for example, um, was on the, was part of the presentation. And then there was another one, maybe College, maybe that was the same one. But how how is it determined what projects are done regarding street maintenance?
I can start. We are refining the process right now, but uh up until in my history here at the city, uh, each department has their prioritization that starts typically with community engagement and a community identified project or it's inclusion in one of our department master plans. And then it can go a number of different ways through advisory boards or community engagement. And then uh like for the multimodal division, we have the criteria matrix that I referenced last night. That has 11 different factors that we rank projects by, and that helps us prioritize them for our funding pot. And we are in the process of making this a bit more of a comprehensive citywide uh process that is consistent across all departments. Because, you know, we have several different funding sources and uh they don't all compete for the same amount of, for the same bucket of money. Uh, but the process should be consistent for people to be able to follow.
And that was my other question, actually, follow up. How is, then how are they funded? Because we know that there's an infrastructure.
Yes, yeah.
Um, and so it depends on the extent of the need or?
We have, so you know, there's several um sales tax with ballot language that allocate funding to certain things. So the multimodal portion of this project is through the 2015 half cent sales tax because that specifically uh in the ballot language calls out pedestrian and bicycle improvements. Then there's the 2019 sales tax and general funds, uh, enterprise funds that these guys work with. Uh, and we have that conversation of prioritization based on available resources annually.
You were talking, I'll just talk specifically, street maintenance. So one of the things that we're really moving toward is asset management. And we have a software program, Lucidity, that has the capacity to do this. And basically, street maintenance, for example, we've analyzed technically all of the street systems. So you might hear a term like our overall condition index numbers of 78, basically a number between zero and 100. We've analyzed the system. What the system will do is it'll take all that information and based on the council's directive, where do you want our OCI level to be? We can even divide that out into the different classifications road, but we'll get to decide this is what we want to maintain. Then the system's going to tell us how much money over a five to 10 year period is going to take us to maintain that number. And so it's it's very simple on the outside. We we determine what we want our OCI to be, and it tells us how much the funding we need to have that that system maintain. But it's also going to be able to move into other areas like our sanitary sewer system, stormwater, facilities, parks. So we're really just getting into that. Let's get this, we're going to get this asset management program to help you folks make better informed decisions over a a longer period of time on the funding we're going to need.
Any other questions? No. Councilor Gonzalez?
No, that was, I I that answered it. Thank you.
Counselor Wood.
Um, we talked about how businesses and residents can plan for this type of thing because they know it ahead of time. Please walk me through the process of how much notification we're giving businesses ahead of time and these residents? And then what sort of assurances can we do to minimize the 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 potential impacts of not having water or other utilities uh as the process pulls through?
Uh, I can speak to, if we're talking construction, um, businesses will be out of water for a very kind of whole period of time, uh, a couple hours because we would keep the old infrastructure live as we put the new infrastructure in. We'd test the new infrastructure and then tie in businesses as we go. Um, so, you know, he can give as much notice as required.
What's required then? Let's let's keep that.
Currently, we uh give two weeks notice.
Okay, so two weeks, okay. And you think that would be at the very least two weeks notice to notify the businesses or the building owner?
That would be something we would put into the documents. We would have the the firm that does do the construction um plan it out in a very strategic way.
Would that be on the city's own or would that be on the business that is performing the work, the construction business to go door to door and talk to these folks?
You can put the verbiage however you want. Typically, you know, if you want them to do it, you pay for it. Um, we do have folks to do it, you know. Currently, it depends on the project.
And realistically, I will say yes. It ends up being both. We get involved to make sure, yes, we hire the contractor to do the job. But ultimately, it's also our job to make sure the contractor does their job.
Okay. So it sounds like potentially less than 24 hours for any sort of closure for water specifically, because water is the big one, right? A restaurant can't operate if there's no water. What's that?
And you can't turn sewer off.
Exactly right. Yeah, so.
Some of it we can kind of control, maybe time of day that that happens, so it's not the peak times.
Right.
I I can't imagine if we're not talking about a block that we haven't had six months, eight months of conversation, that we've been talking to these businesses that this is coming. You got 24 hour notice because, hey, we're right outside your business right now. I get that piece. But for the vast majority of, if we're going block by block, we will, they will have had multiple warnings on.
Outreach is a huge part of this and we'll be, you know, involved.
The interruptions of construction are likely way less impactful than the interruptions of a possible unplanned failure.
Oh, yeah, I used to run El Moro and three different occasions, we were shut down because of a a water break or a line that was, and there was, nothing was isolated. So having to call reservations and explain the situation and get an earful from them, um, I I totally understand. So you're preaching to the choir in terms of like what the interruptions would be for uh an immediate impact versus something that's planned and strategized. So, um, yeah, just to make sure that we're doing at the very least our due diligence to ensure that businesses and and residents know um along whatever corridor we're working on. They have enough, enough of a ahead of time to to know what we're going to be doing.
Any other questions, Councilor? Any other counselors have questions? Go ahead.
So um, and then I'm to Dave's question, okay. That two week notice that the water's going to be turned off and the 24 hour notice that the water will be off, that doesn't include the disruption of parking in the big hole in the ground, does it? Okay, so what would that encompass to do, you know, a water uh repair replacement?
I think I can take the parking uh per council's direction on the resolution. We haven't yet made any definitive plans for redirecting parking or anything like that, but we are committed, if the time comes, that we are directed to continue the project beyond design. That there will be uh very strategic plans and signage and outreach for all of the.
From my perspective, I mean, I'd like to expedite it as quickly as we can. Of course, that's tied to funding, but I think if we take it by the block by block, that'll help us minimize some of the parking, you know, availability rather than if we had a white bread prod in an area like that.
Fair to say that we've had experience on North College that aging infrastructure usually has a domino issue connected to it. We may be able to shorten some of that with the ground radar and and those pieces, but for me, we need to start under promising and over delivering, right? Our timeline should be very wide to make sure that the expectation by the businesses takes into account unforeseen circumstances and then surprise folks if it's a little bit shorter and we're working hard to get there. Al- also, we've got a real problem with getting people into these businesses. I think there's layers of support that we're talking about. And and Jose, I I don't know who would kind of head that up, but what businesses can work out of the alleys? What businesses could work on the side streets while the front of their organization is is torn up? Can we do pop ups? Garden Schwartz moved down to the main mall and did a pop up while the Garden Schwartz buildings in it. So there's multiple business support ideas, I think, that are going to be important for us to to pull in.
There absolutely are. I'm just going to try to pull you all back just a bit because we're we're talking about sort of how this construction works. There's still a big area that either council is going to have to weigh into, and it's funding. Uh, we don't have the funding in our water or sewer or multimodal or streets to do this project today. So there is going to need to be discussions about what that would look like on a water, possibly sewer rate increase. But would that look like if we were going to look at the multimodal, what were they going to look like on the street? So I wanted to just make sure the council knows that and even the public that's listening is, we don't have the ability tomorrow to say like, let's go do it. We wouldn't have the ability when we get to 90%. There's going to be other discussions on the funding side of how do we fund that? And then we can probably start getting into how does that look? So there's still a big step that hasn't been decided, needs to be discussed and approved with the council.
Hold on, hold on a second. So we have a question here.
Well, thank you, Jose, because, you know, people say, okay, well, when are we going to get downtown next steps so you can ride our bikes? It's like, hey, you know what? This project was presented poorly in the beginning. You know, we're still digging up the facts that it's not going to be closing off Main Street. We don't even know what's going to happen underground. So I think having this discussion is really good so people understand that this isn't happening within five years, you know? It's a long term project to even think about this because I surely do not want to do a cosmetic cosmetic fix on downtown without taking care of the underground utilities and infrastructure. So thank you for bringing that up.
Just need a clarification. The the work that was done on the 800 and 900 blocks, is that at least um a way that we get some cost for those blocks? And I I realize it's within the ballpark, but maybe applicable to other blocks or even the worst case scenario, which is what I think the 800 and 900 blocks are going to be.
We do have an engineer's estimate for those two blocks, yes. Um, and we also have historical data from other projects that we've done throughout the city. Um, and I could give you a very vague number, but it's not going to be accurate.
Sure, sure, sure. But we're, I guess my my thinking is, if we're doing this a block at a time, a block a year, then we're not talking about nine blocks. Much lower cost, obviously, but how we figure out that we're doing it per year?
Yeah.
Is not as insurmountable as trying to do all of Maine, right?
Uh, funding wise, um, it's still going to probably tie back. I mean, your infrastructure is tied together. And so even if you do one block, there's a good chance that as you try to maybe do one block, there may be one block that you can't without going to have two blocks. So there's that part to it. And even when you look at your water rates, you want to plan out as what is.
you want to plan out as what is it going to cost for all of it? So that your users know that the increase is coming and we're not going like with a little bit of an increase for this project and we're going to come back and go a little bit. So it's good discussion to have. I just wanted to make sure that as people who are listening in public or listening and even council, the expectation set up that we have a lot of funding discussion to have, and this isn't something that we can do tomorrow. Even if we had it all, there's other bits and pieces that are still going to come into it. How do we fund it? And exactly kind of what you're saying, Counselor Close. So if we decided by block to block, here's what maybe that funding mechanism looks that's different than if we were to go all out at one time, not saying we've decided that, but just say if we did, and then understanding what's the financial benefit and advantages and disadvantages of doing so.
So based on that and knowing like where, what information we need today, does anybody have any questions for these lovely folks that are still standing up here before we break for lunch? We've got about five minutes that we can still ask. So if there's a question that you have.
Question, but I have a statement.
Sure.
Okay, so if we, in the future, if we do the infrastructure project down Main Street, the shining light on this project would be the fact that we know where the utilities are and if they have to do repairs in fifty years, we would know where they would be. So that would be a big value.
Our record keeping from the past was poor.
Yeah, the hazbills are nothing.
They basically don't exist. And so, yes, as we're putting new lines in, we're getting GPS locations for them. We're adding those into the Lucidity program, which is also an asset management program. And it gives us very precise data for the future.
Go ahead.
I guess, you know, the, given what you've just said, Jose, and what's been presented, like, there's very big possibility that this is going to fail very soon. So what options do we have to support that failure? Given that you said, you know, there's really no money here to do this?
Well, I think that it depends on what failure means. Like, I don't know, I wouldn't say that I don't think like the inevitability of all of Maine's going to fail. I think what I could say is that there could be spot failures in different places that that may happen, which we would fix within our budget to do so. What I think we're looking to do is how do we find a way to replace all the aging infrastructure that we know that is in there that we can go by and go through it. So this is kind of the first step. And one thing that I have learned being in this community very carefully is change is wanted, but change is also very hard to communicate how it goes through. Specifically, when you're talking about so many businesses being reliant on Maine and how does that work? And so we're working that delicate balance of we understand this needs to be done. We understand it wasn't addressed when it was and we can't really go back and change that. And we know the infrastructure needs to go, so we're working from the day. And so that you answer questions, we're doing it right now. Here's what the designs are going to look like. Here's what the funding's going to look like. Council will come back to you and say, we finished the design. Here's what the utility side looks like. Here's how we can fund the utility side. Here's what the multimodal cost looks like. Here's how we could possibly fund that. And then it's up to y'all's realm of which do you want to prioritize and which do you want to do? And so that process is beginning now and has begun for probably about a year with some of the design work on Main Street. So it is moving forward. It's just, is there a big price tags that we're talking about that aren't like, just fix this one water line? It's going to be lots, several millions.
Many, many millions, I think. And so, but currently, when there is failures, we've been able to repair them. We've been able to get people back in business.
Yes.
That kind of alludes to part of the infrastructure is the isolation valves are the same age as the pipe and often don't seat anymore. You know, El Moro is a good example of that. That break was likely not in the block outside that business. If those, if you have valve clusters each block, you can just get rid of one. You can isolate one block and minimize the outages. Whereas with our current infrastructure, it's two, three, five. Sometimes unknown area that you have to isolate. You also then have to drain that line to repair it, which just adds time.
Okay, I, we are on a time crunch and we have somebody to come and take pictures of councils. So I'm going to ask that the five counselors jump up and grab their boxes of lunch. And then after that, everybody else can get their lunches. You guys, and you've got one more question.
Oh, do, and it needs to be follow-ups to something that Jessica said.
So this is going to be the last question for this? And if you have follow-ups, we'll.
It's a small question. We talked about the fact that the, we have to determine how wide the sidewalk is so you'll know where to place the utilities. Could you take the maximum width sidewalk as an estimate, place utilities accordingly? And then if we shrink the sidewalk, that doesn't matter?
It matters because when you, you start with a horizontal alignment and that's the basis for all of your engineering work, for your vertical alignments and your valve placements, you really do need to know horizontally where the line's going to be before you can move forwards.
Thanks.
A couple of quick closing statements. One, I just wanted everybody to know, we were doing so well until our boss had to bring the money thing on. That is the critical, that is, that's the critical aspect. But two things, the sky isn't falling. We know we've got some work to do. The frequency of some of the interruptions could become a little more frequent in the future, but we can fix. And the good part about it is, you know, under the City Manager Office leadership, we're working together. You know, so the departments are working together, so we're not working in silos. So I think, you know, it's going to be successful moving forward, but it's, it'll be, it'll be fun, so.
So we're going to have you five get your lunches first, and then I will be in touch with you guys of where you're supposed to be for your photograph at twelve forty-five is what we have that scheduled for right now. We are going to take a ten minute break right now while you all get your lunches, and then we're going to kind of move into the next topic. So while we're eating, we're going to talk.
I'm not sure why everybody's actually not looking forward to.
So you guys could start eating.
What lunch did you want? Look, I'm going to take it.
Requisition was started with the funding source, the parks and recreation. That's not true.
I didn't know that it was going to be told to you this, but she's been seeing other libraries.
Will they do it right?